Recording in progress.
Um, okay, um, just to remind everybody, um, the, uh, uh, this meeting is being recorded. Um, so everybody should know that, um, if, um, you have a question, um, there is a little raise hand box that you can raise your hand and, um, uh, we will recognize you, um, and, uh, Eric will activate, uh, your camera or your audio and we'll be able to, uh, you'll be able to ask your question. So, um, our first item on the agenda is, uh, open forum. Um, and, uh, just a couple of announcements. Um, first of all, um, I do want to tell everybody, remind everybody that special town meeting is Saturday, October 16th, at 1:00 PM at the field of the Westford Academy. Um, we realize that that, uh, time has changed now, uh, from our last meeting and we certainly apologize for any confusion, but, um, we are trying to accommodate schedules of everybody and, um, learned after our last meeting that PSATs were being, uh, given at the academy, um, that morning and we certainly don't want to interfere with that. So, special town meeting is now on Saturday, October 16th at 1:00 PM. Um, and then, uh, yep.
I got a text back from Scott. Um, he's having trouble with the link and Eric, if, maybe if you could resend him the right link, that would be helpful. Thanks. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. Thank you. Um, okay. Um, the next announcement I want to make, just for, uh, uh, all residents to know is that, uh, the Board of Health at its last meeting, uh, issued a directive and as of Friday, October 1st, uh, masks will be required, uh, in all public indoor places. So, uh, folks, um, should need, uh, should know that, you know, in light of, uh, the Delta variant and, um, uh, the continuation of, uh, COVID, um, the, uh, Board of Health has issued that directive. Um, then, uh, finally, um, congratulations are in order. Um, uh, congratulations to our, our very own Town Clerk, Patty Doobie. Uh, Patty recently qualified for the Massachusetts Town Clerk's Association's Certified Massachusetts Municipal Clerk Designation. Um, she is currently one of only 120 of the Commonwealth's 301 active town, uh, clerks to hold this designation. Um, it's achieved by attending educational courses and passing a 250-question aptitude test, uh, that measures the clerk's knowledge of Massachusetts law in elections, election procedures, vital records, campaign and political finance, town meeting, Chapter 41 of planning, zoning, ethics and public records. Um, yeah, I think as far as, uh, the board is concerned and certainly I, the residents of Westford, I think that the, um, Massachusetts Town Clerk's Association, uh, has recognized and acknowledged what, uh, we all here in Westford know, and that is Patty is the absolute consummate town clerk who is always ready to help, um, always with, uh, a can-do attitude and a smile. And if she doesn't know the answer, when you go and ask her, she will certainly find it out for you and get back to you about it. So Patty, congratulations on, uh, a well-deserved, um, uh, um, designation and, uh, uh, award. And, um, we here in Westford are very fortunate to have you. You were on mute, Patty.
Thank you.
All right. Um, does anybody else from the board have any, uh, uh, announcements for your, um, open forum? Okay, um, I don't see any, so, um, and I don't see any from our attendees. So, um, moving on to our next item, which is a, uh, request for a change of a corporate officer LLC manager for, um, an all-alcohol restaurant license for the 99 Restaurant of Boston LLC, doing business as the 99 Restaurant at 333 Littleton Road. Patty, is everything in order?
Everything is in order. This is basically a rubber stamp. This is at the corporate level. So this is for all the 99s. The ABCC sends them to everyone. We just have to say, yes, I, they don't send them to everyone, but they do it at their level, not so much our town level. So we just need to say, yes, we're okay with it. And I think we should be. She lives in Franklin, Tennessee, so I'm assuming she's okay.
All right. Um, is, is there a motion to approve?
To move.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi.
Andrew, you do have one. Oh, there was a hand up from Andrew Upton. It looks like it's up again, one of the attendees.
Okay, um, Andrew, do you have a comment or a question?
Uh, yes, just Andrew Upton, uh, attorney for the applicant was just raising my hand in case there were any questions, but, uh, as the clerk said, it's extremely straightforward and has been pre-approved.
And you're all set. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, uh, we are at our consent agenda and, uh, we have, uh, a request to, uh, approve the following. Um, a banner, uh, for the Boy Scout Troop 159 Annual Winter Sporting Goods Sale. The applicant is Malik Shaw. The dates are Saturday, October 30th, 2021 to Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. Uh, the location is at the First Parish Church. Um, the Westford Firefighters Tour, Westford with Santa. The applicant is Jeffrey, uh, Dufanet, of the Westford Firefighters Association. Um, the dates are December 4th, 2021 to December, Tuesday, December 14th, 2021. The location is in front of the J.B. Fletcher Library. And then, uh, a request to use the Town Common and Bandstand for the annual tree lighting ceremony. The applicant is the Westford Girl Scouts. It's from Sunday, November 28th, 2021, from 2:30 PM to 6:30 PM. Um, uh, is there, um, I see that we have, um, a question from, it says Bonn Crankowitz, but I'm thinking it's probably Bob Crankowitz. So, um, Bob, do you have a question?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I, I'm directing this to, in generally to the select board. And I'm curious as to, and I'd like an explanation of why they're not enforcing the APR and how I mean it is, why isn't this man who owns the property developing agricultural use of it, which is a requirement of the APR? It's a contract and it's not being fulfilled. Is there a reason? Am I not seeing something? I'd appreciate some sort of an explanation or a response. Thank you.
Okay, um, so, um, such a, a response and an explanation is certainly more than we can do in open forum. Um, and, um, certainly not something that, uh, we were, uh, prepared, uh, to discuss or is on our agenda tonight. It's certainly something that, uh, we will, uh, put on a future agenda and, um, uh, uh, discuss at a future time. Um, okay, um, back to our consent agenda. Um, uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, um, together with, um, uh, recommendations from our public safety officials?
To move.
Is there a second? Um, all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Our next item is, uh, an overview, uh, and initiatives of the Westford Police Department. Um, and, uh, presented by our, uh, chief, uh, um, Mark Chambers. So, uh, Chief Chambers, I am going to turn it over to you.
Hi, everybody. Uh, it's good to be here. It's been a little while since I've been in front of the board. So, um, I did provide Eric with a kind of slideshow, if you can pull it up. You know, I'm not very computer savvy, so you'll have to bear with the, uh, the poor presentation of the slides, but, um.
Give me just a second, Mark, pulling it up.
Yep, no problem. So what I tried to do with, with this overview and, uh, initiatives, um, is just try and be pretty brief where, where we're at. But I think it's important to know where the police department is at before we can really determine where we're going. So I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed and, um, kind of get everybody together on this one. So, uh, Eric, can you just go to the second one, please? All right. So currently the Western Police Department is budgeted for 49 full-time officers. Um, we are staffed right now with only 46 due to three vacancies. We did have, uh, we just recently, uh, gave conditional letters of employment to, to officers, hopefully, to be able to, um, fill the 49th officer that was originally added to the budget in January of 21. Uh, we did have a candidate that had been, uh, offered a position, but, uh, we were not able to help them complete all of their, uh, conditions of employment. And then with the, uh, retirement, Chief Mack, and any, we waited till the beginning of this fiscal year to replace that officer as well. And we had an unscheduled, um, resignation, an officer that had been on the job for about a year and a half, for almost two years, um, decided to change career paths. So, so we're currently looking, uh, to get three officers into a police academy. And within the next couple of months, we're actually, we're going to be down two more officers on top. Um, I think in the past, we've done presentations in front of the board to explain how long this hiring process can be. And it's not just because of civil service, but, uh, all of the prerequisites that, uh, the prerequisites that our candidates have to pass between physicals and psychologicals and, um, physical aptitude testing. And then they also have to pass a, another physical exam to get into the police academy that consists of a run, push-ups, sit-ups, sprinting, um, and some minor strength training to be able to get into an academy. Um, and that is starting to become a problem for police, uh, agencies across the country at this point. So, uh, hopefully within the next few months, we'll have those three in the academy. And then the two additional retirements that are occurring within the next four months. We do have, uh, Captain Neil, who's going to be retiring in January after 32 years with the Western Police Department. Uh, at plus 32 plus, he was a dispatcher for a while beforehand. And Officer Dave Welch, who came to us in the 90s from the, um, University of Massachusetts at Lowell. So, uh, two very experienced officers that mean a lot to us here in, in the town, both, both, uh, live in town and, and gave a lot to this community. They're, they're going to be retiring. So hopefully we can get those positions filled and get people into the academy for that. Uh, Eric, can we move down, please? So currently we did, we do have several divisions and services provided by the Western Police Department. Our patrol division, which is, uh, our uniformed division, that's who people are going to see generally on the road. They are highly visible and uniformed. Our detectives are generally in plain clothes, shirt and tie during the day. Sometimes you might see them in jeans and a t-shirt on the 3 to 11 because they're, uh, they may be doing some, uh, surveillance and, and other, uh, assignments. We do have a narcotics detective that is working with the DEA Task Force. If you'll remember, a couple of months ago, we did have a drug, um, incident over on Cold Spring Road where, uh, we recovered a firearm. We do have traffic officers that deal with specific traffic complaints, particularly this time of year, we've been dealing with a lot of, uh, complaints from the schools. And, um, they're generally going to be our representatives at community events, uh, because we have a little bit of freedom of schedule with them. We do have our two SROs, one stationed out of the Western Academy that helps to cover the Western school system. And then, um, Detective Araklio works out of the Neshova Tech. Detective Peladu is our canine officer. He has two dogs. We do have a, a yellow lab who, if anybody follows our Facebook feed, there was a great picture of him today, uh, down at our, down at our training, um, firearms training. And, uh, he does all the drug, uh, yellow lab, uh, empire does all of our drug work. And then Liko is our patrol dog, looks more like a traditional police dog, but he also does, um, explosives and bomb-making materials. Uh, so he's a little bit more passive. And then our family services unit, uh, that works with the Coin, uh, Collaborative Civil Rights Officer Domestic Balance Mental Health. So our special services, mountain bike, hopefully some people in town have seen them out. We've tried to get them out onto the rail trail. Most recently through, um, East Boston camps as well, Cornerstone Square for parking enforcement. And we've, we've really used them quite a bit this summer up in the quarry when it was really warm, uh, when you have the 90-degree-plus temperatures, you, we can have upwards of 100 people up there at different times. So we've really tried to get the mountain bikes up there. Uh, we do also have a police boat and we do have officers that are specifically trained to, to use the, the boat. Uh, you'll see them out on Long South, South for Pond, Nav Lake and Forge Pond. They were out there quite a bit this year. We actually had quite a few complaints, uh, that we were able to address. Then we have different training units between our firearms, which, uh, Jody's familiar with. She's come to see us shoot before. Uh, our defensive tactics, which is all of the police hand-to-hand. Um, both of our firearms and defensive tactics instructors, we do have two, uh, that, that train us locally, but they also have uh, extensive experience working with police academies and, um, part-time police academies. Use of force instructors, field training officers, field sobriety testing, um, and one of the newest, um, one of the newest, um, kind of training that we've, we've started to introduce is the Critical Incident Team Training, which I'll get into a little bit more in a, in a minute. And we do have two officers that are certified to be car seat installation, um, technicians. And you should, we'll start seeing them out in the, in the community a little bit more, working with daycares and making sure that everybody has the necessary equipment, uh, for their children to be safe. So, uh, we do have some grant funding that helps to purchase different, um, car seats and booster seats that we do provide to the public. Eric, can you move down? All right. And again, I think this is important to understand where the Western Police Department is right now. Um, we originally underwent certification under the Mass Police Accreditation Program in 2003 and received the certification and became accredited in 2005, which is a set of standards that the police department meets. It's a body of professional standards for police agencies, uh, and we undergo this voluntary assessment. And as you can see, it's, it's the two stages to make sure that we're following best practices for the profession of policing. And it is a profession now. So, uh, we do a self-assessment by our own agency leading up to it to make sure that we have, um, and we are following all the program standards. And then we do have an external peer review, uh, police chiefs, police captains. Captain Neil is actually very, uh, integral to our maintaining our accreditation, but he's also, he also works very closely with the Mass Police Accreditation Program as an assessor himself. So we, we try to take advantage of his knowledge, uh, locally to make sure that we are, uh, leading the way and not just trying to keep up with the standards. Eric, can you just move down? Again, this is just some of the, some of the benefits of participating in the program. We've mentioned best practices. One of the important things that we saw was corrective, correcting deficiencies. So if we're aware of a policy or procedure that, um, that we may need to improve upon, there is a, a, a body of standards that we can pull from to make sure that we get up to date and we make sure that we're on top of that. There is a lot of accountability that comes with it. If you are not, if you do not meet standards, they make you do the, do the work, uh, to make sure that you, before they leave or they will not issue, uh, your accreditation. So you won't be recertified. So, uh, it's, it's a very professional body that makes sure that you are following the best standards. That is one of our most important and ongoing, um, initiatives here with the police department, especially with the Police Reform Act. Uh, Eric, do you can move forward? So under the Justice and Policing, the current Police Reform Act, there were updates that were necessary to our policies and procedures. We were pretty fortunate because of, uh, having Captain Neil and, and maintaining our accreditation status, that it was wording changes and not necessarily how we approach policing here in town. Um, because of the, the new laws that went into effect, we did have to change our use of force, which I know we had put on our website, uh, over last summer. Um, but we did have to change some definitions and eliminate all chokeholds and putting in a, a little bit more of an emphasis on de-escalation. The use of force reporting now requires us to report to the new police off, uh, Peace Officer Standards Training Committee, Commission, sorry. Within, uh, two hours, uh, sorry, two days of receiving any complaints of an excessive use of force, we also have to, um, report all of our officer complaints and officer discipline that is for any active and any officer who used to work for us that has gone to a different department. So there's really starting to become a little bit more, um, a little bit, a little bit more, um, accountability on, on, uh, police officers within this, within the state, because we don't, there hasn't always been a way to track officers between departments. Uh, Internal Affairs has, has also changed. Like I said, if we receive complaints, they're reported to the state body as well now, along with all of our findings to make sure that, um, you know, it's, it's a checks and balances to make sure the police departments are, are taking these complaints seriously and, and enforcing them. Um, changes in the way mental health crisis is, is, uh, addressed. Our canine services can't use them for crowd control, except under specific examples, um, additional training in identification and prevention of bias, interaction with transgender individuals, which really was just update our, uh, the best practices in the language and search warrant affidavits, which included the, uh, no-knock warrants, the restriction on those. So, um, again, we're going to be working with the peace officer. This is where we start getting the new stuff where we're going to be working with the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission. They are requiring every single officer that is current as a police officer has to maintain a certain level and standard of training that has been identified by the state. All of our officers are in good standing. All of our officers are certified. Moving forward, all of our internal affairs investigations, any officer discipline, whether it's a suspension or, or any unprofessional conduct is reported to the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission. All right, Eric, can you move down? Um, one of the other new initiatives that we're trying to take on here is, uh, advancing our supervision and leadership training. One of the things that I was able to do when I first became, uh, an administrator here for Westford was to implement a field training, a professional field training officer program where, um, we have a set of standards that every recruit has to meet before. We're comfortable enough to give them the keys, keys to the town on their own. And we're doing the same thing with our sergeants now. Uh, we've created a task book that, that will keep track of all the things that they've been trained in, additional suicide awareness and officer health and wellness. And then we're trying to standardize the additional training that they receive. Just because they tested well or were made a sergeant doesn't mean that they're going to be a good one. So we want to make sure that we're trying to enhance their leadership abilities by sending them to, uh, a five-day leadership course that's offered through the state, looking for additional outside sources of training, such as the FBI leader, which is the Law Enforcement Except, Law Enforcement Executive Development Academy, as well as, uh, the Public Safety Leadership Academy, which is really starting to get a toll hold here in Massachusetts. It's, uh, a New England-based training company. And then, uh, we're going to try and get all of our supervisors, uh, certified as crisis intervention team leaders, uh, which is through the, uh, National Alliance on, on Mental Wellness and the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Eric, can you move down? So moving into that through NAMI and Sansa is the Critical Intervention Team, which is, um, it provides officers with additional training. It's a 40-hour, one-week-long class that really gives officers tools and tips in how to deal with people that may be in mental health crisis or substance abuse crisis. Uh, intervention tactics, um, de-escalation language, how to recognize different signs and symptoms depending on what the cause of the crisis may be. Um, this just happened, uh, I want to say it was either last week of August, the first week of September, where we had five officers that were certified. And then shortly thereafter, one of the officers enjoyed the training so much that he requested to be, uh, to attend a, um, Crisis Intervention Team trainer, train-the-trainer class. So we now have our own Crisis Intervention Team Trainer on staff, which will be working with area police departments to train additional first responders and police officers in the Crisis Intervention Team Training. We've also sent several officers to our youth mental health first aid, particularly our SROs, because I think the more training that they have in dealing with, uh, youth that are experiencing crisis, the better off we're going to be. And then one of the new initiatives that the Coin program has put forward is the Peer Support Officers, which again goes hand-in-hand with all of the mental health issues that, um, have really come to the forefront recently, particularly with the COVID crisis. But, um, for police officers, the Peer Support Officer, we do not currently have one on staff, but we are, um, actively participating in planning that training with area police departments through the Coin initiative. We also have an Officer Wellness Instructor who also recently got certified, uh, Lieutenant Pellaquin. Most of that's physical fitness, but we have some nutrition and, uh, peer support services that are going to be attached with that position as well. Uh, again, these are just additional duties that our officers take on above and beyond what they normally would be doing. And Officer Nick Mariano is, uh, undergoing field sobriety testing instructor certifications, um, over the next several weeks, which is, it never hurts to have that type of in-house training. Not only does it save us money, but I think it leads to a more professional staff because we have the resources on site where we can do additional roll-call training and just spot check with, with our officers to make sure that they're following best, best practices as they kind of evolve. Eric, if you move down. Um, one of the other initiatives that we're trying to work on is, is forming a community service team. This is kind of above and beyond what our officers will normally be working on. Occasionally, when we have our community events, um, we can get several of our officers, but this will be a little bit more formalized. We want to have a little bit, we want to have more buy-in from the officers. So by having them participate in the planning, we're hoping that it gives them a little bit more ownership, not just of the police department, but within the community. So we're looking to have several of our officers volunteer and help plan and staff a lot of these events. We did a popsicles with police up in the Granite Bill Woods neighborhood, uh, back in August. That was very well-attended. Uh, there were a lot of sticky fingers and, and messy faces, which was really good to see. National Night Out happens, um, I believe it's in June every year. A lot of the area police departments just started this initiative. I believe Chelmsford did it this year, first Tuesday in August. And we're going to be looking to participate as well. And we're going to be looking to participate as well. And hopefully, we can plan this with some of the other town departments where we can do some safety demonstrations, maybe some touch of trucks and really put our brand out there and get everybody to, hopefully, we can get a lot of people to attend so they can get more comfortable with us. And we planned our first coffee, Coffee with the Cop. Sal down at Paul's Diner has volunteered to let us crash his place on October sixth at ten AM. And what Coffee with the Cop is, it's just an informal atmosphere where if you want to come down and meet the police officers, we're going to have five or six of us down there and just have a conversation. It's a lot more informal than like the community meeting would be, where if you're having a particular problem in your neighborhood that you want to make us aware of that, you know, you may not want to make a big deal out of in front of, you know, fifty other people at some town hall style. This is where we do it. We can sit and have a conversation. Or if you want to come down and just learn what makes me tick, or my deputy, or some some of our officers, you know, some of them like to fish, some of them like to play softball, whatever the conversation wants to be, oh, you want it to be, that's that's what we're going to be there for. We're hoping to pull off a family movie night in June with the Westford Academy, maybe get the boosters involved and hopefully have the new snack bar up and running. So Officer Bernadine, Detective Bernadine is working with the school on that, along with Lieutenant Genrin. And then we have a couple of our officers that are huge gamers. They really enjoy the video games, Call of Duty and Halo and all the other good ones. I think that might be a good way to get some of the other other teams involved that don't want to have anything to do with police. But maybe if, you know, we're still looking into the planning of this. I don't know how feasible it's going to be, because each of the kind of gaming stations costs a couple hundred bucks and you need the TVs and everything else. So we really would like to have a kind of an in-person, round robin style tournament. We'll we'll see if we can pull that one off. Hopefully, we can talk with Jody and get a table at the farmer's market next year on several dates, just to make sure that we have a presence there and give the opportunity for our community to come and ask us questions. Some of you may have already noticed that we have increased our social media presence over the past couple of months. We're really trying to let people know what it is we do, even sometimes the the fun and goofy stuff. I personally love the picture of Empire today. He's he's probably my favorite police canine in the twenty-four years that I've been a police officer. That's the the best cuddly dog. You can make fun of Cory for for letting him smell bad sometimes because it takes him through the swamp and stuff, but he's still a great dog. And then Lieutenant Genrin has volunteered to work with the Middlesex Sheriff's Middlesex Sheriff's Office and touch base with the Littleton Police Department. And hopefully, we might be able to get a public safety academy up and running. This may take a year or two, just because of the logistics involved and permissions and liability. We have a lot to look into. And again, these, most of these are outside of our officers' normal duty hours. So we just bear with us, because we want to make sure that we're up there in the community a little bit more and and really having these interactions. Eric, if you can move down to the last one, I believe. So and then another initiative that comes from our conversations last year is we really want to be on top of our diversity, equity and inclusion and our participation. I've had conversations with Eric Barber Mingo, the one of the chairs of the DEI Committee, and he knows he can contact me whenever whenever he has an issue or a question about the police department. We've provided additional training for implicit bias and race relations, cultural competency that we've sent officers to. We've added additional policy and procedure reviews. And Officer Tim Larkham was sent as a bias-free policing instructor. Again, this is just so we can do touch-ups and have roll call trainings, like quick-hit trainings to remind people that we need to be aware of this and be taking the proper steps to valid. We also have prioritized de-escalation training. We provide some photos from the Middlesex Sheriff's Office trailer that came out, I believe it was in April, then provided a shoot no shoot type training scenario where the response of the the video training is based upon how the officer interacts. So I'd opened our eyes to a few deficiencies with some officers that we were able to address. But more than anything, it really kind of showed us that we're doing a pretty good job with training and maybe illuminated some places that we might be able to make a little bit of improvement. And we've also heard from the community about restored justice initiatives. We do work with the Middlesex County District Attorney's Office, and we take that very seriously. We don't have a lot of cases that really would qualify for restorative justice, I think, because maybe we do a pretty good job beforehand and considering the circumstances. But when we do bring, go to bring forward charges, we do go through diversion programs. We have offenders attend mental health court and drug court, which basically just mandates that they attend different trainings and and meet with different doctors to to determine where they're at and what services might be offered to help with their future behavior and help them sort their lives out. So and as you can see, there's also maintaining cooperative relationship with all town departments and task force. I think making sure that we have a good relationship with the rest of the community is very important with the other departments. And then other future discussions and considerations that we're really working on. Civil Service is up for review right now with the state through the Justice and Policing Act. We're kind of waiting to see how all that goes to see what initiatives they're going to take and continue discussions with the union and see where we're at with civil service. Body more cameras has come up, and we continue to look into that. We're going to be getting pricing and discussing with the union and other bodies within the town, and we'll make a decision on those. Last year's budget cycle was pretty interesting with the introduction of the hybrid cruisers. And I'm not sure if anybody kept up with the news, but Ford Mustang Mach-E, that's a fully electric vehicle that just underwent police certification through the Michigan State Policeman, got pursuit rated. So if there's a grant out there, I'll be more than happy to try that out. And then we have Officer Larkham actually volunteered. He's a, he's a, he's a drone guy. He really likes those unmanned aerial vehicles. And he attended a class, and he actually has a presentation that hopefully I'll be able to put together in the next couple of months for for the board's consideration. But we're, we're looking to bring a drone program into the Westford Police Department to help with search and rescue. When those drones are equipped properly, especially with like infrared, that can really be a game changer when it comes to searching for a suspect or a lost person in the evening or at night, or even during the day, because the heat signature can help direct the officers right in to the person. And then one thing that's kind of near and dear to my heart is on the training side, getting the additional emergency first aid training equipment for first responders. With my background as a firearms and defensive tactics instructor, one of the, one of the scariest things that I always worried about was having an accidental discharge on the range or one of my officers being involved in the shooting and not having the proper equipment on them or readily available to address a gunshot wound, stab wound. So we're looking into QuickClot and Cellox, which is a treated bandage that you stuff into a wound and make sure that it helps to cauterize the bleeding, wherein it doesn't affect the ability for emergency services to go in and actually work on a patient. So that early intervention in in a first aid crisis can really make or break a person's survival rate. So one of the things that we have been able to do, we just got confirmation at the beginning of the week, is we were able to get some tourniquets, some QuickClot bandages into every one of our police cruisers. So that basically, that sums it up. It's kind of a broad overview. I'm sorry I talk so much, but Jody asked me to throw it together, and I did my best. So. Do we have any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Very much appreciated and can certainly see the time and effort you put into this to making the presentation. So let me, let me first ask the board members if they have questions that they would like to ask the police chief. Let me start with John and then Tom.
How you doing, Chief? Looks like you've got a lot of training on your, in your lap there. Can you kind of give an estimate, how much training does an average officer have to go through every year?
So off the top, I haven't really added it up. So an average officer has to attend the five-day training, which is mandatory each year to maintain their certification, which is our in-service. So you have diversity and equity type training, you have mental health training, you have suicide awareness training, firearms, defensive tactics, a bunch of other stuff. So that's, that's, we go to, we partner with the Lowell Police Training Division, and they offer an in-service program over in Lowell, and it's all in-person. So you actually get hands-on training, you interact with officers from other departments, and it really is great for, not just for your networking, but also that watching a video is is never going to be able to replace in-person training. So we think that's important to maintain. And then on top of that, there is also, we have our mandatory annual Taser training. We have sixteen hours of mandatory firearms training and then additional certifications, depending on your instructor certifications and everything else that they do. One of the big helps has been the vehicle surcharge that was added to rental rental cars that was going towards police training. I've never seen the municipal police training committee offer as much training as they have been. And that's all free.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom?
Thanks, Andrea. So Chief, I'm really happy to see all the community engagement stuff and glad to hear that you're cooperating with Eric Barber Mingo and the Town Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. Just as you're kind of continuing your your ramp up, how are you thinking about doing outreach to some of the diverse communities in town that I know you'd like to build a stronger relationship with? Either with the DI Committee or just, you know, separate initiatives that you might be thinking about?
So one of the ways that we really want to try and outreach is getting into the neighborhoods that have a higher population, a diverse population, with these popsicles with the police and other small community events, just so it's, so we can reach out to the youth and hopefully it's not as intimidating to talk to police. And one of the other things that we've been discussing is maybe partnering with WA to reach out and maybe work with the Ghost Rider, the student-run newspaper, to hopefully be able to reach more students, maybe like an Ask the Police Chief column every once in a while. And just attend more community events with COVID. It has been pretty tough to to really make a lot of connections. And I know I've spoken with Anita about this in the past, but just trying to make inroads with with some of the diversity groups that are include, that are in town. You know, it's, it has been difficult. I won't lie, it's been difficult. So I don't, I don't have the best strategy. We're, we're doing our best to try and get out there.
Anita?
Yeah, thank you, Chief, for this presentation. I know presenting is not always your most comfortable time. And obviously, you put a lot of effort into this, and I really appreciate it, because this is something I've been interested in for a really long time. I thought you gave a lot of really great information. I love the overview that you provided and also what your future considerations are. And I just have a couple of comments and questions for you. Hopefully, nothing too hard. One is just that about the community service team, I think that's a really great initiative to start, just to kind of echo what Tom was saying. I love, I mean, I noticed National Night Night Out last summer, and I was like, oh, man, this would be something great that Westford is a part of. So I'm glad that's on the list of things to explore. I have noticed the social media presence, and I feel like that's a really great way for just the community to passively understand more about what you're doing. So I just wanted to applaud you for the extra effort that you're putting into that. And also under the community service team, that gaming tournament that you mentioned, I know that Westford Cat has been trying to do gaming stuff at their location with some of the youth. Maybe that's a potential partner to explore. I don't know where that is right now, but I know that they've tried it a couple of times, and they have all the equipment there, right? I was curious to learn a little bit about the services and divisions that you have listed, you know, patrols, detectives, narcotics, traffic, SROs, family services and canines. Where do you feel like things are really stretched right now? I know this is a really busy department. Is there a particular area where you're like, man, you know, things are really tight here? In terms of manpower?
He's going to answer everywhere, Anita.
Everywhere. There we go. I think we've had to make some adjustments with our scheduling for our patrol officers with with those three openings that I, you know, we were really trending in the right direction and then with the retirement and it taking so long to fill that the new forty-ninth officer. And then this recent resignation really kind of forced us to adjust our scheduling. So I would say in our patrol division, and that's the most visible of of our capacities. And I would, any officer that comes in is immediately going to go into into our patrol division. I'm not looking to really create any new positions. It's it's strictly to to fill our staffing where we've been trying to get it to.
And a question that I have that kind of follows up on John's is, so there is a lot of training that's on your list, and I think that's great. I think it's great to build capacity and empower our staff's knowledge and just, you know, be more informed. But I was wondering if there's, within that education, if there's continuing education in that process of like, there's refreshers or something, is that built into your training schedule?
So that's really a daily thing. So we conduct a roll call training every day, and that's part of our accreditation process, is to make sure that we're we're constantly reviewing our policies and procedures. So each week, officers are exposed to our kind of high, our high-value policies and procedures, you know. You know, some of our policies are thirty-plus pages long, but the sergeants and lieutenants that run the shift will go through a couple pages of it, just to highlight some important areas for the officers to, you know, hopefully remind themselves of or refresh themselves on. So there is that ongoing training. And then the in-service, again, is that week-long training that officers get each year. But I believe, to address your question specifically, it is, we do roll call training every single day, every single shift. We will have kind of guest appearances to work with Coin right now to do some roll call trainings, just to have a representative from Coin come in and explain exactly the services, because I can tell them until I'm blue in the face and provide them with all the paperwork. Sometimes if we get somebody from outside to come in and just do a quick fifteen-minute presentation, that helps a lot as well.
Okay, great. And then I guess my last question or comment is just that while you're exploring all these trainings and doing all this community outreach and stuff, I, I would really encourage like more partnerships with, there's, like, I know you're doing stuff with NAMI and SAMSA and stuff, but if there are other organizations that could further, you know, kind of complement the work that you're doing, if you're not able to build the capacity in-house with training, I would really encourage some community partnerships, because then you've got the expertise kind of available, right? And just kind of adding that to your list of eight million other things.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Scott?
Yeah, so thanks, Parker. And one of the things that we had observed as part of the chief interviews was that all three of you had great ideas for, you know, inclusion of in the community, and we encouraged you to, you work with your other members to come up with some ideas. I'm glad to see some of what was suggested at that meeting on your list. So, you know, thank you for, for listening to that. I guess you have two questions. One is, you know, a couple of years ago, Tom and I took a look at staffing issues, and one of the concerns was that we were watching our calls become much more driven by by need and thus by officer initiation. So I was curious if we have any information, say, that with hiring, you know, some new staff, if we manage to improve that that ratio or not?
I haven't run the the numbers specifically for this conversation, but there has been an improvement in the individual calls, the number of individual calls handled by officers. But we also had COVID. So it's really difficult to kind of look back and 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 compare the past year and a half to anything that we've had previously. And it was really only about 2019 before we really started to implement the additional officers. My feeling is that it has, and I think it's, it's, it's allowed us to do a few different things that we weren't able to do before. I think we've, over the past couple of years, we've been able to increase our community engagement, because I don't think we've been running from call to call quite like we were for a while. But without having, I, I didn't run the statistics, Scott, to give you a definitive answer, other than just a general feeling that I could give you.
Okay, thanks. And I guess the second question, which I think will probably be coming up tonight anyway, you know, I think for all of us, the most common complaint, well, if you will, in town is speeding. So, you know, without giving away any trade secrets, you know, could you explain, you know, how we do the traffic? Is it, you know, we've got certain spots that we, you know, position cruisers in, that I'm sure there's patrols, but again, I know you don't want to tell us how we do it, but can you give a, yeah, I guess, you know, some indication of how we disperse cruisers around town and and try to cover, you know, all of the major throughways and even the minor ones?
I don't want to give up trade secrets, Scott. So generally, what will happen is if we receive a speeding complaint, I don't want to give up trade secrets, Scott. Uh, so generally what'll happen is if we receive a speeding complaint, we'll reach out to the person that complained and obviously kind of explain to them what our process will be. And you'll see an increased presence of our marked units in the area where when they're available, we encourage them to do radar enforcement. So you will see them on the side of the road. So don't speed on Beaver Brook Road. I'm sure everybody's seen cruises over there. But for the most part, it's when we receive the complaints, we try to increase the presence to see if we can affect this kind of the short term. And if it's a more of a heavily traveled road, we will get the speed boards out, or if we receive multiple complaints from multiple residents, we do try to get the speed boards up and analyze the traffic patterns, whether or not there's a high volume, what the average speed is. Uh, and occasionally, when we do see a higher-than-average speed reported on that road, we'll do additional enforcement and then we'll work with town engineering to see if there's additional um if there's additional measures that we can take such as like putting up additional signs or or having the sun the uh road painted to make it a little bit more appear a little more narrow, which doesn't happen very often, but we do try to take every single but there's a few more things going to it, but that's kind of just a bit.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um. Uh, let me just say something. And I know we do have a question, a a couple of comments. First of all, uh, thank you, Chief. Let me echo everybody else's thanks for for your presentation tonight and 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 putting it together. I, you know, I I think like everybody else has said tonight, um, I'm I'm really uh pleased and excited to see some of the community um initiatives that um you and and members of the force are going to be taking in the future. And um towards that end, um, I'd also like uh to express our appreciation for the members of the force who are undertaking um these um additional um overtures to the community and who've also stepped up and done additional training um above and beyond their normal and usual duties and responsibilities. Um, and thank them for doing that. Um, I I think I think in the long run, it benefits everybody. It benefits them. It benefits our community. Um, and it, you know, benefits uh relation uh relationships. So thank you uh very much um for doing that. And thank you to the uh to the members of the force. And I guess um, I think um and and by the way, I did see the picture of your dog today and it was lovely. And with that, um, uh, you know, maybe um uh in about uh six months, um, when you've had an opportunity to um implement some of these uh initiatives, uh, we'll have you back. Um, and um, you can report on uh how they're going, what's working, what isn't working. If there's some help we can give you, some assistance. Um, and uh, we can see, uh, you know, we can have another conversation, uh, basically. So with that, um, there are a couple of uh uh questions and comments. Um, actually, they're they're basically comments. Emily Teller um uh wants to confirm that three hybrid police vehicles are in order for our department. I guess Jody or Mark, are they? Are they chief?
Yes, we ordered, we did place an order uh first week of July, as soon as we we uh went into the new fiscal year, we did place the order for three hybrid Ford Explorers, which should help us save gas. Unfortunately, we will probably not have them until May. We're always, it seems like we're always trying to get the police cars in and get them marked and get all the equipment in them. And now you add the the worldwide kind of chip shortage that has slowed down vehicle production and everything else. So we're gonna have to wait and see how it impacts us this this year. My feeling is that we're probably gonna have to hold on to our older cars a little bit longer, at least for this year. But we'll see how it goes and uh we are building our budget for next year already and hybrid cruisers are what my estimates have been based upon. So again, there's always the the Ford Mustang Marquis, uh, I'm willing to discuss.
Okay, um, you you answered her second question, which was when will they arrive? And I think you said you are hopeful they will arrive in May. And then her last question was, will those vehicles have any identifying marks on them so the community can be more aware of that technology here? I.e. that we've got um hybrid police vehicles?
There was no plan to, but uh that is a relatively easy fix. Uh, we could always put a larger green leaf. Jody has her hand up.
I see. Jody?
Yeah, we could paint the whole car green if.
That's an additional charge.
We can, we can figure out how to do that, okay?
Yeah, we can, we, I mean, that that I understand that and I think that might be a a good thing to do. We can discuss that with the vehicle outfitter uh that does our graphics and see if they have some clean energy symbol or or something that we might be able to use to to help advertise it.
Okay, and then we just have a a comment from uh James uh Kokus. I hope I pronounced his name right. Um, and he just simply says, thank you. I don't see any other comments or que- questions from the um from our audience. Oh, yes, um Chauncey Chu has his hand up. So.
Hey, good evening, Chief. Nice to see you there. Hey, I thought that I learned quite a bit of your uh from your presentation there. That's great. Also, it's news to me that Ford's um Mustang Marquis was approved for police use. So that's great. So maybe uh we can push Jody's arm and get some extra money there for those uh Mark Es.
Yeah, Eric's working on grant funding.
Okay, I had a a question here. Oh, I also wanted to make a comment. Thank you for the uh speed control on Beaver Brook. That's um they really use that as a raceway there. It's a, it's, they do a lot of speeding down on Beaver Brook. The question I had was, given how tough it is to recruit in all businesses here now, are you finding it troublesome to get solid recruits here for the police department? And I believe that um the selection process is crucial to for you to get qualified uh people on the force there. So if you could comment on how the recruiting is going. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chauncey. Uh, Chief?
Thank you, Chauncey. Good to hear from you. Um, so nationally, recruitment of police officers is way down. It's um has not, it doesn't appear to be as desirable a position as it used to be. It was recognized before everything, uh, before the social justice movement from uh last year really came to the forefront. Recruiting in policing has has been a problem. Finding qualified candidates makes it even more so. Uh, no criminal history, no, uh, there's a lot of disqualifiers when it comes to handling a firearm. So it has been incredibly difficult. We've been pretty fortunate here in Westford, even though we're we're not seeing the same number of interested applicants through the civil service system. The recruits that we're getting are are very good. Um, they have good backgrounds, good morals, good ethics. During our hiring process, we do put them under a lot of stress during the interview in particular because we want to understand their thought process and we encourage them to explain their thought process in our scenario-based questions. So we know that they kind of have a good foundation, good moral and ethical foundation. And if they can, if they can think their way through some of the problems critically, you can see their ethics kind of come through. They may not always get it right, but at least you know you're working with a good, solid individual. But yes, we are, we are seeing, you know, where ten years ago, we would, we would probably have twenty-five, thirty names on our civil service list for hiring. Uh, I think this last one just came out September first. We had fourteen candidates. So um, and some of, some of them are just at a quick glance are aren't even qualified to be a police officer. So that's kind of limited our candidate pool even even further. So we're really gonna kind of see how this plays out over the next year and a half with our current civil service list.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't see any more questions or comments. So um thank you very much, Chief, and um have a good night.
Thank you for having me. And if anybody needs anything, just reach out.
Okay. All right, we are next, we are at our our next agenda item, uh, which is a request for authorization to submit seventy-five percent design on the Boston Road rehabilitation project and an update on the Beaver Brook Bridge project. So um let's see, um, Steve Cronin, Paul Starrett and um Jonathan Rockwell, uh, which one of you is gonna start and where do you want to start?
I'll start, Andrea. Thank you. Um, Steve Cronin, Director of Public Works, uh, with me tonight is Paul Starrett, the Town Engineer, and John Rockwell from our design team at TEC. Um, and we're here to provide you with an update on two significant infrastructure projects that the Department of Public Works has been working on uh to advance towards construction. So first off, we'd like to uh provide an overview on the seventy-five percent design plans for the Boston Road reconstruction project and request that the board authorize the town engineer to submit those plans to MastDOT. And then we'll follow that up with a brief update on the Beaver Brook uh Bridge project. So first off, Boston Road, our last update to the select board on the Boston Road project was in April of two thousand and twenty-one, following uh the twenty-five percent design hearing that we held with MastDOT, our design team and uh Project of Butters. Uh, since that time, we've advanced the design, um, and it includes some um minor revisions to the plans such as improvements to the intersection of Boston Road and Main Street, um, additional stormwater best management practices. We've incorporated some recommendations from our project arborists and uh we extended the sidewalk on the west side of Boston Road from Blake's Hill Road to the uh fire station driveway. More recently, on September ninth, we met with the pedestrian safety committee and invited Project of Butters to present the seventy-five percent design plans and solicit feedback from the committee in a Butters, which we uh included in your packet. At this time, I'm gonna hand it over to John Rockwell from our design team at TEC. Uh, he's gonna join us and walk you through some of the revisions between the uh twenty-five percent and seventy-five percent design plans. And then Paul and I look forward to hearing your feedback and answering any questions you might have about the project.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Steve. Uh, thank you to the board for hearing us tonight. Uh, Eric, if you wouldn't mind jumping ahead to, I think it's slide thirteen. Just to give a little bit of a refresher to the board on uh the general scope of the improvements, uh, include uh complete streets improvements to uh incorporate new bicycle lanes along Boston Road between Main Street and the four ninety-five interchange. We'll maintain two through lanes of traffic, uh, one in each direction throughout that stretch. Uh, the lanes will be formalized to a consistent width, uh, whereas today they vary a fair amount. And we'll be installing a new sidewalk, reconstructing the sidewalk where it exists today, but also extending that sidewalk. The sidewalk will be on the east side of the road uh from Main Street all the way down to the four ninety-five interchange. Uh, and some of the key elements of the project, uh, as you're probably aware, a new water line uh along the entire length, a new stormwater drainage system uh along the entire length of the roadway. And then minor intersection improvements at uh primarily Main Street, uh Crown Road and uh Blake's Hill Road. Uh, focusing in on the Main Street-Boston Road intersection, just some of the key uh changes that have happened between the twenty-five percent design and the seventy-five percent design. These are in some respects uh responsive to MastDOT's comments on the twenty-five percent design, but also taking into account uh many of the things that we heard at the formal twenty-five percent design public hearing um that was held earlier this year. So at Main Street and Boston Road, uh, some of the concerns were related to uh visibility to pedestrians and some of the speed of turning traffic there. Uh, so one of the key changes that we made was the crosswalk across Boston Road at Main Street has been shifted closer to Main Street so that pedestrians crossing there are more visible to vehicles, particularly those that are turning right or left from Main Street onto Boston Road. Uh, we also introducing uh the flush median that you can see on the Boston Road approach to Main Street. And that's intended to kind of visually narrow up that um that approach to require turning vehicles to turn that make those turns more slowly, uh, which will improve pedestrian safety as well as vehicular safety for vehicles uh turning to and from Main Street and Boston Road. Uh, at the pedestrian crossing across Main Street, just east of Boston Road, uh, some of the improvements that we've made there are some additional uh pedestrian advanced warning signs, additional warning signs at the point of the crosswalk itself and some additional pavement markings consisting of a yield line uh across the two-lane approach heading westbound toward that crosswalk. And then a sign also indicating yield here to pedestrians um at that yield line. So that's all intended to uh both improve the advanced recognition of the pedestrian crossing there to slow down vehicles approaching that crosswalk and turning to and from Boston Road. And then there are just some other uh pavement marking improvements in the vicinity of that intersection intended to help better channelize the vehicles that are turning there and try to minimize the conflicts between uh vehicles turning left from Main Street to Boston Road. A lot of what we heard at the design public hearing uh related to some some conflicting uh movements, turning movements there. And then Steve made reference to some key changes to the or key improvements to the stormwater system, particularly at uh Crown Road, the uh we heard concerns about the amount of stormwater flowing to the existing drainage easement there. Uh, so the proposed drainage system will introduce a diversion manhole there uh so that the uh capacity of the flow to that easement is no greater than it is today. And the remainder of the flow uh will be sent down the hill uh to the bottom where we're creating uh a stormwater wetland which will uh help to treat the quality of the stormwater and to manage the qua- uh the quantity of the stormwater uh coming off of Boston Road all the way down to that point. And then we also since the um twenty-five percent design have had an arborist review, walked the corridor with uh the engineering department and myself and identified uh additional treatment to trees along the corridor in order to preserve those that we can make recommendations for trimming, uh how to preserve the root system in areas where there may be excavation close to the trees. And then to identify those that are in poor health that that should otherwise be removed, uh, regardless of whether the project were to occur or not. And I think in general, that's um, that kind of covers the the gist of the primary uh scope changes since the twenty-five percent design. I'd be happy to entertain any any questions specific to uh the design itself.
Okay, let me start with the board. Um, and then I know we have audiences, audience out there, and I'm sure that they have uh questions um as well. So, um, Anita?
Hi, thank you for that overview of the design. That was really helpful to kind of walk through because I'm not on, I don't read designs every day, so it was nice for you to walk it through for me. Um, I have a question about shifting that crosswalk closer um to Main Street to improve the visibility of pedestrians. Can you point out for me where exactly that is? Because there is a crosswalk already right at that intersection, and so I just was trying to picture where that was.
Yeah, the, Eric, if you could bring up that point again, I don't, I don't have control of the screen, so I can, I can only uh describe it, I guess. The 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 crosswalk across Boston Road at the end of the flush median island there uh was shifted approximately eight feet toward Main Street. So the beginning of that crosswalk, the nearest edge of that crosswalk to Main Street now is really set back only two to three feet from the edge of Main Street. Whereas today, the existing crosswalk is set back uh close to six to eight feet.
Thank you. Um, other questions or comments from the board? John? And then Scott?
Yes, uh, one of the concerns that's been voiced is the fact that that the fifteen percent, we said we had something like four different islands that uh would kind of help slow down the traffic. And since that time, uh, they've been deleted. And I didn't, I couldn't find the plan. So where were those four uh medians located? And could they not have uh a flush median like you have at the corner up there at Main and Boston Road? Couldn't they have been substituted for uh the medias that we deleted?
Yeah, there were, I think, four or five intermediate medians proposed at various locations, at key locations uh along the corridor as part of the fifteen percent design. That was an alternative that was shown um, I believe at the Ped Safety Committee meeting uh at the fifteen percent design level. And uh those medians, there was one immediately north of Crown Road. And those medians, there was one immediately north of Crown Road. We were trying to focus on areas where there were either a long stretch of straightaway or a long stretch of downhill where we anticipated that vehicles were picking up speed significantly. My understanding is that, that was vetted through public safety officials in town prior to the 25% design, and the decision was made at that point to remove those from, from the design. Introducing those, even if they were to be a flush median as opposed to a raised median, would still have those additional property impacts that were associated with those, which I think may have been, may have been another additional concern.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, yeah, well, John, that's my question. I mean, I, yeah, we kind of focused on Boston Road up by the town common and changes that were discussed. And I guess, yeah, I drive that road a lot, as we all do. Today I drove it with really just looking at the road and as I went down and, you know, what would it, what would it take to put those islands back in around Crown Road? Because I, I just can't imagine trying to turn left out of there a good chunk of the day. And we've seen that those islands would have had some positive effect on, on helping cars slow down at that point, perhaps even give a little bit of refuge. If you came out turning left and you guessed wrong, you'd have a space to kind of park before you pulled into that downhill lane.
Right, the, the minimum width for those islands, I think at the time we recommended a four-foot minimum width for the raised portion, and then a small offset on either side for, for striping just to, to offset vehicles from hitting the curb. So the total width, additional width over the roadway that was proposed now would be an additional six feet there. So it would encroach, you know, grading impacts and such would encroach another six feet onto the abutting properties in those areas.
So just to expand upon John's comments, I mean, it would require us to, would require some additional land takings in the vicinity of those islands, would also widen out the roadway a little bit. So, you know, in discussions with public safety, there were concerns that by placing those medians in the middle of the road, it could, you know, impede response time and impact their ability to get up and down Boston Road. So out of those, out of those concerns, it was recommended that we remove those from the 15% design. They were not included in the 25% design, but we did include some additional, you know, pedestrian safety measures and, and some improvements that we thought would help the speeds along Boston Road.
I, to follow up, I mean, if, if, you know, I think some of the abutters to that intersection will be on the call tonight, and at least one of them was, you know, critical at the Ped Safety Committee meeting. So if the abutters were to agree to that trade-off, that, you know, they lose a little bit of front yard, but they'll gain the degree of safety, would that affect the decision at all?
Well, it would require a little bit of a redesign on the project. It would have to go back to MASTDOT for another review. You know, we've talked with our design team and, you know, we'd be looking at a design amendment here that would, you know, total about $50,000 in order to redesign those and to incorporate them into the project. And that doesn't include whatever the additional land tankings would be in order to, to make that happen. So, you know, we need to go back and see exactly what those property impacts are to figure out financially how it's going to impact the project. You know, but once again, it was, you know, public safety did weigh in and felt that, you know, medians of that size could be an issue. So, you know, it might, might need some reconsideration, at least the size of them, if they want to be incorporated back in the project.
Okay, so I'm going to interrupt right now because we've got a couple of questions about islands and medians, and since I, I want to take those now. So Patrick McGinn writes, and I think it's probably a question that he's not the only one who's wondering, but what is a flush median and why wouldn't it work?
Yeah, I mean, a flush median can be created with any number of treatments. It could be either a scored concrete treatment that's flush with the pavement, relatively flush. It could be a stamped asphalt or stamped concrete material that has the look and texture of brick or, or cobbles. The flush option versus a raised option wouldn't have as much of a traffic calming effect as a raised option, given that you're not physically restricting it and it's a little more difficult to see in advance as, as would be a raised island where you could potentially put landscaping or something on it. But flush islands would have also still some benefit to kind of divert the through vehicle around it, which is some of the benefit of the traffic calming.
So would it be fair to say that even if it doesn't have the same traffic calming as a raised median, that it might have, that it could still have some traffic calming effect?
Yeah, I think it would have still some traffic calming effect, minimal relative to the raised island, but some.
And then Brian McDonald writes, are center islands medians still under consideration? Quite similar to Boston Road is Concord Street in Weston between Intervale Road and Washington Street that makes use of these to slow traffic and works, and apparently police and fire can still do their job. I don't know if either one of you are familiar with, with that roadway in, in Weston or something similar, if you can respond to Mr. McDonald.
I'm personally not familiar with it. You know, we did look at some other towns that did have islands on similar roads. I think Westwood was one of those. I know that, that public safety did reach out to those towns or to that town in particular to get their feedback on the islands, and it was a cause of concern for them and, you know, not necessarily recommended in those communities. But, you know, I don't know if, if Paul, you're aware of anywhere else where these have been utilized?
No, of course, other than the city of Boston and Cambridge, they're, they're all over the Fenways and, and the roads, the similar roads to that, but.
Okay, Tom?
Andrea, just wanted to make sure you saw Chief Targ had raised his hand. He may have a comment.
I do, I was, yeah, I, I was actually, I assume that Chief Targ, Chief Targ has a comment or a question in connection with the median. So Chief? I'm getting good at this, Tom.
It looks like the chief is muted. I don't know if that's Eric or some.
But, yeah. Can we unmute Chief Targ? We have Deputy Chief Britko. Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
Ah, finally there, okay.
Okay, we got you.
Okay, I was gonna say, I did reach out to Chief Decker from Westwood Fire Department, and I believe they might have a little bit narrow island. I don't think they have the bike path, but he said, I don't know, when we respond, we have a tendency, people react differently when they have a fire truck or an ambulance behind them. Some just slam on the brakes and we have to go around them. Some pull over, they don't pull over all the way. The average width of a fire truck is 10 feet wide. Fire truck, we've reduced the size of our trucks recently, the ones we've been buying, but mirror to mirror, they're 10 foot, six inches. The average width of a car is six feet. That leaves us like a foot to play with, you know, if we had to pass one in those sections if it was steady traffic. If there was a UPS or FedEx truck stopped along making a delivery there, it would be impassable for the ambulance or the fire truck to get by them if they're stopped and the driver wasn't in the truck. We don't have the option to go around like we would normally go around. Seeing a flush median, or, or I don't think the neighbors would like rumble strips there, but, you know, that would be, be a great option. We do see the speed ourselves on Boston Road, but we wouldn't be opposed to anything like that. It's just, we're worried about getting log jammed on Boston Road responding to calls either up or down the hill.
Okay, thank you. Jody?
Another suggestion that I've thought about is putting permanent speed, you know, detection radar signs up, one in each direction, because I think one of the things we found recently, and even the chief commented to me, is when we put up that speed sign on Boston Road, it did significantly slow traffic. So maybe versus move them around town and only put it there for a period, perhaps we could put one in each direction at strategic areas to help slow the traffic down.
Other questions or comments from the board before I go to folks who have their hands up and also who've written in questions? Okay. Yep, John?
Yeah, just one thought. Have we thought about designating that length of road and maybe even the road through town is thickly settled? And thought even though changing the speed limit there might not have any effect, but at least it, but it, you know, it might. But supposedly, at least what I've read, that you could reduce it to 25 miles an hour if you wanted to. And, and then of course enforcement becomes critical in something like that.
Yep. Anita, okay.
I didn't know if you was, I have a question, and I don't know if this is really possible in Massachusetts, but in Virginia, around my parents' neighborhood, there are certain streets where if you're fined, if you're caught, you know, if you're caught speeding and you get a speeding ticket, there's an additional 200 or $150 on top of that speeding ticket. Is that something that's allowed in Massachusetts or?
Oh, we should, we should ask town council that question.
Because maybe that's something that we could explore for that road, you know? I just know that, you know, everyone wants cops on their, on their street to, to handle traffic and speeding and stuff, but Boston Road seems like it has that, especially, you know, especially has that need, so.
Okay, we should definitely, Jody, will you, will you send that question to town council? Thank you. All right, um, let me turn to, um, questions from the, the audience and panelists. So Patrick McGinn, you still have your hand up, so I assume perhaps you have more questions? So if we can unmute him, Eric, and he can ask his questions.
Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Good, well, I, I do appreciate how the, you know, the, the town and the state solicit feedback from us and Paul and Jonathan, you know, have certainly put up with a lot of us on Boston Road over these last few years. But I think that, you know, it really is, I can't say emphatically enough that controlling the speed on the road is paramount. If that is not addressed in this, then I can't see how this is anything but irresponsible. I'm glad that the gentleman who drove down the road earlier today noticed, you know, the, the layout here, and as I was jotting some notes down about this, this is an extraordinarily dense community. I mean, it is still a neighborhood, everyone races by like it's 495, but we live here. I've been here for 25 years. And this plan simply increases the amount of cars that go through this and does it faster. I mean, I know that we're in a part of the world that's growing, so I understand the volume part of it, but I can't see how the density of this road would be sort of set to the side so quickly. If you've never walked it, you certainly should. It's a, it's a great place to, to live, but it is a concern that we're going to have more and more speed as this goes, because that's the way that the road is designed. You know, ultimately, if there isn't some sort of change to this, to, to improve the safety of the neighborhood while at the same time improving the road, then it's going to be simply more dangerous than it is today. I know that my neighbor got into a, he got rear-ended. I mean, I'm, I'm almost been killed shoveling my mailbox. And again, if you go to any other residential community of this density in Westford, there's no way their road would be designed like this. There's simply no way, especially on a hill. And so it seems to be somewhat irresponsible to be able to run it this way. I mean, is there a way that we can limit the lane size, bring it down to 10 feet? At the last meeting, the engineer mentioned that there are other 10-foot roads in Westford, but that was dismissed because, well, this is the entry to, to Westford. Well, I would say that, that's ludicrous. I mean, that's a illogical answer because we're still a resident, we're residential area. I mean, this is a residential street, and to simply do that because we get a lot of people from New Hampshire coming through here, just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. So I'm concerned about the, the impact to the, to the, to the neighborhood, the safety of the people who walk here, pull out of their driveway sometime in the morning. I'd encourage everyone on the board, all, all of you, to come to my house someday and try to pull out in the morning. We're looking at a 20% increase in volume in the next several years when this is done, and the speed is undoubtedly going to be over 40 on average. So that's my comments. I really think it's got to be addressed with some structural thing, change the lane size. Is there a way to make the medians more narrow? I don't think the medians were the whole length of the road. So keeping in mind the safety considerations for the fire department, is there, is there a way to do that so that these are not that long? I thought they were like 20 feet long, so there certainly would be lots of space for fire trucks to move around, but something else has to be addressed on this, otherwise it really does seem like it puts us on the track.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McGinn. We've got a lot of people, so I'm going to go to the next person. Peter Posersky? Hi there. Yes, we can hear you. And, and just so you know, the board has received your letter and it has been made a, a part of the Select Board packets that we all got tonight, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank Paul and Jonathan. They've been very responsive for the last couple of years that we've been going down this road. And one of the early things that I had mentioned to Paul years ago now was that adding 10-foot worth of bike lanes is widening Boston Road, and I think he agreed with that. And we know that widening roads inherently makes them faster. And the police department was kind, or someone was kind enough to put a speed monitor out there, and I sat there for 10 minutes and it took two minutes for someone to come down going 50. The average speed, the median speed of the road is already 40. You add in a 10-foot extra buffer for drivers? My school bus driver, I think her second nature is to lean on the horn because people come around by Crown Road going 50 miles an hour and they can't stop for her. They can't stop because there are stop signs out there and they don't. Nice little landscaper blew right through it twice this week. So I don't feel enough attention's been paid. I think that people of Boston Road have spoken out consistently that we need, if you're going to add 10-foot worth of width in front of my house, it's about 10-foot worth of width to the road, then you need to make it so somehow that road is slower because you're making the road faster. And it's, I almost got hit three times this week pulling out, because you want to pull out of my driveway just south of Crown Road where it's a nice curve and the people coming 50 miles an hour likely lean on their horn as I pull out? I mean, if we can't make it better, we shouldn't be making it worse. And I think that's the, the main takeaway for me is by adding bike lanes, you've added speed because you've made the road wider. Because the drivers don't see that as, that's not my space. They see that as, I can now go 50 around this corner, no problem whatsoever. And that's, I think, I think Paul would agree that, and I don't want to put words in the mouth, but I think Paul should comment on if we feel that that's going to make this road faster, because I feel it is, and I feel the road's already somewhat dangerous. I knew that moving here, but I didn't think we'd actually make it worse.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen George?
I, I'm trying to be.
Well, you are because we can hear you.
Oh, good. The comments that have been made so far have really been all that, I couldn't say anything more, I couldn't say anything better. It is, it's scary. And I've requested that the committee, that a committee be formed to bring together all of these issues that we're worried about and, and have them addressed. It seems that the, the idea that we have to go in to redesign is a, a difficult thing or an expensive thing, it's something that they don't want to do. But I think you hear enough that, that there's a great concern over the, the traffic and the speed of the traffic. At the meeting on September 9th, Consultant John Rockwell saw the issue correctly. He said, quote, "The issue of greatest concern seems to be the speed and the number of cars on Boston Road, and that issue is not adequately dealt with in the rehabilitation plans." Amen, he got it right. And then he went on to describe how a speed limit is set to, it is set to accommodate the fastest-moving vehicle, quote, "for their safety." Quote, "For this quarter, the prevailing speed..." Quote, "For this quarter, the prevailing speed is just above 40 miles an hour. So we designed features of the road to accommodate that, so vehicles are traveling safely. So the road is being designed for the ease and safety of people who like to drive fast." And then Paul endorsed that by saying that we can't control human behavior. We have to put up with this, in other words. But we don't, and we do, we can control it. Eric, I don't know, do you have the picture?
Maureen, we're not going to go through the whole public presentation back in September, okay? We, we certainly understand and we're hearing from you and the others that, that speed and traffic and control is, is a major concern of all of you who live out there.
Okay, I, I rest my case.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I repeat, I, I request that a committee be formed.
We will talk, we are, it's on the agenda and it, we'll talk about that next.
Thank you, thank you.
After, after this. Okay, June McMorrow? June? June, are you there? Is she unmuted, Eric?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought I heard her unmuted me, so.
Okay, June, I, can you, are you there?
There are two Junes.
There are two Junes. This is June McMorrow.
I know, there are two June McMorrows logged in.
Two June McMorrows logged in, okay. I only see one.
Can you hear me? Yeah.
Yes.
I'm apparently the other June McMorrow, so.
Oh.
Anyway, my actual name is Bob Jeffries.
I was going to say, Bob, you do not, that does not sound like June McMorrow. That sounds like Bob Jeffries.
So I won't go over everything. I wrote you a letter, I also.
And you sent us a picture too.
I sent you the historical picture of Boston Road and doing research, it turns out that the first rules of the road were done in China in 1100 B.C. And men were to walk on the right side of the road, women to walk on the left side of the road, and wagons down the middle. That 1909 Boston Road isn't all that different, except that they had progressed to the point where men and women were allowed to walk on the same side of the road.
Good to know.
I, I really strongly feel that if you're on the western side of Boston Road, you cannot cross the road. There's no way to get across the road. The traffic comes through so fast. And there's no sidewalk on that side. There's no potential for crosswalks because they won't put in a crosswalk unless it goes to a sidewalk. So if you want to get to a crosswalk and you're on the eastern side, you either have to go up to Main Street or you have to go all the way down to Blake's Hill Road. If we could combine pedestrians and bicycles, because I'm much less afraid of the bicycles than I am of the 50 to, and it's 60 miles an hour. You know, this, this idea that it's only 50, no, it's prevailing maybe 40, and that's 40 with a cup of coffee and doing, looking in the mirror and talking on the phone. And that's really dangerous. And everybody on this road, we, we've been hit coming out of our driveway. And you can't get out of the driveway. And this doesn't improve any of that situation for the western side of the road. The eastern side of the road, the sidewalk has actually become more dangerous because now it's right there at a mountable curb. It's facilitated by all of the ADA curb cuts. And I'm not understanding them at all because you go down the, you go to the end of your driveway, you go down the curb cut in a wheelchair. Where are you? You're just in the road. You have, you have nowhere to go. So why, why do we even have to do them? So I talked to Paul and I think Jonathan and Stephen about the idea of can we combine into, and if it's a single one, that's still okay. At least we have someplace to get to where the bikes and the sidewalk are shared. And maybe it's a little bit bigger design and it allows for some landscaping. Because if you, if you remember the picture of Boston Road, the sidewalk is really well protected by having trees and poles in it. So that you can't, anybody trying to mount the curb would be taken down. In this design, there's nothing there other than mailboxes and these odd ADA cuts. So I, I really think we need to rethink this. It goes to 38 and a half feet of pavement from side to side. And there are 13, that I know of, 13 young children on Boston Road. Three of them living across the street from me, who happen to be my grandchildren. There's no way they're going to make 38 and a half feet and really be able to detect the traffic. Because when we go out now, if I make a left turn out of my driveway on the west side and I look down the hill, I see people down at, I have to wait until somebody's down by the, what used to be the Tadmouth Club. And by the time I'm in the lane going up the hill, I've got somebody honking, flashing their lights and occasionally hitting. And they get more aggressive as they go because they're in a real hurry to get to the stop sign at the top of the hill. I have no idea why that happens. But I really think, rethinking this and either raising a bike combined sidewalk on both sides that use, bikes can use and pedestrians can use. And keep, you can maintain the lanes the way you want. And cut the design speed down, it, it shouldn't be increased to 40 miles an hour. I don't think that's going to save anybody because they're going to go 50 to 5 to 60. And then the next time we go through this process, we'll be increasing it again, I guess. And the last comment I have is, this didn't happen to Main Street. Main Street has no sidewalks. It has no bike lanes. It was rebuilt from the top of the hill all the way down past the convenience stores. So why do we have a different standard for Boston Road, which has turned into a thoroughfare? And there's no other road like it in the town. So for two miles, we've got a real drag strip. And elsewhere in the town, we've got narrow winding roads. So it's just completely out of place. Anyway, that's, that's my comments.
Thanks, Bob. Okay. So we have comments from, from folks. And, and I'm going to take everybody who's got their hands up, which includes Jennifer Kelly, Juliette Mount, Peter Ewing, William Harmon. I will also take the 12 comments that are now in the comment box. And, and then we, we will, we'll go back to the board and have a discussion of where we want to go from here. People who are going to speak, please bear in mind, we understand the traffic concerns. We understand the speeding concerns. So we don't, you know, you don't need to repeat those. We, we've heard those. So Jennifer Kelly, you're next. Jennifer? You're still showing.
Hi, sorry.
Hi, there you go. We can hear you.
I live on Mamie Lane, which a lot of people don't know about this because it's a teeny tiny road off Boston Road. There's only three of us on there. And I have two young children, seven and four. We are often walking on Boston Road. We're walking to the library, we're walking to Muffins on Main. And I can't tell you how many times I've been terrified of them and myself and my dog getting hit now when the speed of the road has not yet increased. I've seen people fly by the school buses. I've seen people parked on the sidewalk, which is not okay. And my thought process is, is it necessary to have a bike lane when we could just remove that and be more aware of the people who live on the street, who use the street every day like me? And our safety? Because I feel like we're being put on the back burner and it's completely unfair. Especially because, you know, my kids and I, I have to make sure that we're not getting hit by anything when we're trying to check the mailbox, if a ball rolls, because people just fly by. They don't care already. And I've seen accidents on that road. I've seen people hit that telephone pole by Crown Road more than once. And I just don't, I just want to make sure that we're safe and everybody around us is safe.
Okay, thank you. All right, Juliette, Juliette Mount?
There you go. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. I did put some recommendations in the text and also in listening to Bob, who's, who's excellent at this. The idea that we could have combined bike and pedestrian traffic on both sides. I really think, I would love if the committee could consider that because it does solve a number of problems. The road is currently very dangerous. We could never walk it safely right now. So I do appreciate the concept of putting in the sidewalk and bike paths so that we could hopefully be able to, to walk through and into the center of town. I, I really have been looking forward to this project for years, so I'll say that. But I am concerned, as others, and have noted a few options that I really hope we could consider. I know that for years, we've, we've heard that it's a state highway, we can only do so much. But I, I think that having the fire station where it is might give us an opportunity to put in a stop sign or some means to control the speed. Then folks are going uphill and putting in another stop at Crown where I believe the highway is done, if I'm not mistaken, or certainly close by. So maybe putting in stop signs would certainly do, I think, two things. One would be to control the speed because they wouldn't be able to accelerate or maintain their speed coming off of 495, which is a big part of the problem, right? They're coming off, flying off the ramp and maintaining their speed up through. So that is an issue that would be halted by a stop sign. The other piece of this is that because they're going uphill, they wouldn't be able to accelerate as fast in most cases or certainly would be discouraged if they knew there was another stop sign ahead. The second recommendation is to actually expand that such that if we had additional stop signs coming into town from both sides further out, not, not, not so much all just in the center of town, but the main roads leading in to discourage cut through traffic. People cut through because they think they have a faster way to get from New Hampshire down through. A lot of the plates are New Hampshire plates. If we put in additional stops along the way, on the outer side of it, on the outer edges of town, I think that would help to discourage some of the additional traffic. And then finally, if we could potentially consider similar to what Chelmsford has coming off of 495, they have a no left turn with a weight on trucks that won't allow them to, to take that turn and go through. If we were to discourage trucks that are other than local delivery beyond a certain weight, that would also help. Because right now tractor trailers are cutting through town. It's terrible. So it's not just the speed. It's also that these very large vehicles that don't belong cutting through town are not limited from doing so. So I would appreciate it if we could consider all of this and, you know, look at the whole system that we're dealing with. Straightening out the road, to be honest, as I know, I've spoken with Paul about that. We've had two fatalities right in front of our house within the past roughly 10 years. So to know that we could straighten this but manage the speed, to me, would make it safer. So I don't, I, I appreciate the additional visibility. I very much appreciate having sidewalks and bike paths that would allow us non-motorized transport through town and be able to walk and, and take a bike ride. But it's really, really important that we consider these additional options. It's not just about the shape and width of the road. It's also maybe implementing these additional things. I know Paul and others in the previous meeting mentioned striping, so it would be narrower. And that was referenced earlier, earlier in the conversation. I think that could be very helpful. But I really like what Bob Jeffries had suggested in terms of considering the two sides as combined methods for people to cross. Because I'm on that west side of the road where he's absolutely right. We, we can't cross. It's not safe. And, and allowing both sides to be sidewalks, I imagine the cost is higher potentially. But at the end of the day, it would solve a lot of problems. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Juliette. Peter Ewing?
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi, I'd just like to quickly express my support for this project. As a former member of the Pedestrian Safety Committee, we had looked at this stretch of road and, and it probably concerned us more than any other stretch of, of road in town. Or certainly it was at, at the top of the list. With just the need of connecting sidewalks and adding bike lanes between, you know, our historic village and minus corner. And we've got good sidewalks on both ends and we just need to get them connected. And, and of course, I, I certainly understand there are other safety issues and I hope there are some solutions that are found. But I just wanted to say I'm very much in support of moving this project forward. And I want to thank everybody in the engineering and town government pedestrian safety committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Bill Harmon?
Hello, this is Bill.
Hi, Bill. Yes, we can.
The reason I raise my hand is to make this statement. Boston Road is not an ordinary road. It's, it's unique because of Westford Common, which is a blessing for all of us. And the contrast between Westford Common and the Route 495 area is so dramatic that we have to, well, if we had a really good design, which I'm, I'm not satisfied with this design, but if we had a really good one, it would begin by that statement that this, this road, Boston Road, is not, is not an ordinary road. And it needs special provisions. So in other words, the, I'm trying to make the point that the state standards for designing a road do not apply to this road here. They would apply to Plain Road and Deepo Road, but not to Boston Road. It's totally different. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. And Bob Crankowitz, even though you raised your hand after I said that I wouldn't take any more comments, I will take your comment. So go ahead, Bob. Bob?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Basically, I wanted to talk about the sidewalk when it passes the last house on Boston Road. That would be the eastern side when it goes along the Drew Gardens area. How is that sidewalk? Maybe John could, Jonathan could answer to that. How is that sidewalk going to manifest? Because it's a very steep area. Would it follow the slope of the street? Or would it go down into the orchard? Or how would that be manifested? Can you explain that, Jonathan, please?
Yeah, there would have to be some widening to the slope in that area to support the width of the sidewalk. And so I think, I think in that specific, if I'm understanding the, the area correctly, I think in that specific area, there's a slight shifting of the roadway to the inside of the curb as well. So a little bit of a, a cut to the grade on the inside and a little bit of fill on the outside to, to fit that in, basically.
And what about ADA requirements? Would, would it follow the slope of the road? Because it would be there fairly close to the road. The sidewalk would be fairly close to the road. Would that, how it would manifest?
Yes. Along the entire corridor, the sidewalk is proposed to be adjacent to the shoulder to the bike lane. So right up against the roadway edge with a vertical granite curb separation.
And what impact would it be if we had a sidewalk on both sides? How would that be arranged on the east side? Or rather, the west side, I'm sorry, the west side of, of the street as it goes around that curve?
In many areas, given the topography of the side slopes of the roadway, it'd be a pretty significant impact, particularly given the steepness of many of the driveways there. To introduce a sidewalk, the minimum sidewalk width would have to be five feet plus the width of the curb. So a total of five and a half feet. And at each of the driveway crossings, those crossings need to be made compliant. So today, many of those driveways on the uphill slope begin to slope up immediately from the edge of Boston Road. Where if you introduced a sidewalk, that slope couldn't begin until five and a half feet further in.
What do you think DOT would feel about it if we discussed that as a possibility with two sidewalks, both sides of the road? Would they be amenable to that or would they?
I think they would potentially be amenable to it. However. However, you know, one thing just to keep in mind is when we went through the alternatives analysis prior to the 25% design submittal, you know, certain other alternatives were vetted and discussed that, many of which were rejected due to the extent of additional impacts, property impacts, grading impacts, particularly to the parcel toward the bottom of the hill with the agricultural preservation restriction. So the alternative that was ultimately advanced to 25% was intended to be a balance among all of those competing goals.
Because that could be possible solution to have the ability to be on both sides of the road and be able to get up and down if we can't find some way to slow the speed down. That certainly should be a consideration or relook at the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Most of the comments that we have, many of them we've already addressed. Some of them are just reiterating speed and controlling speed. So what I'm going to do in the interest of time and moving things along is that all of these comments are going to become part of the public record and will be forwarded to Paul and Jonathan and Steve for their consideration. So I want to go back to the board now. You know, we are being asked, actually, I want to go back to the board and I have a question for Steve Cronin. We're being asked to authorize to submit the 75% design on Boston Road tonight. Steve or Jonathan or Paul, whomever is able to answer that. Does this decision have to be made tonight? Is there a deadline and a time limit by which we must make a decision as to the submittal of the 75% design?
So this program is currently scheduled to receive Mast dot funding in the amount of $10.2 million. So there is a bit of a deadline in order to make sure that we can secure that funding for this project. Paul, do you want to speak to the next deadline on these plans in order to make sure that we hit that target date?
Right, and I've reviewed this, anticipating this particular question. I reviewed with the project manager from Mast DOT. And in order for them to keep the project on schedule, they need our 25% submittal by October 12th. Is that correct, Jonathan? I believe that's what John Freeman told me earlier, that we have to get them in. So tonight would be, that's why we lined this up.
Well, we meet on October 12th. That is actually our next meeting. So I suspect, well, I would hope that if we decide to continue that to our October 12th meeting or if we have to schedule an additional meeting, that will be understood. But let me turn to the board now and ask the board, any thoughts, considerations here? And what the pleasure of the board is at this point.
Andrea, can I just ask a process question?
Yes, please do.
Paul, you said the 25% needs to be submitted by then. Did you mean the 75%?
I'm sorry, yeah.
I just wanted to be sure we had that clarified.
It has to go through an extensive review process by Boston and Worcester District 3. And so they need that kind of lead time to keep us on schedule.
Right, okay, but it's a 75, not the 20.
Yes, yeah, it's the plans that we have in your packets tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so any comments from the board? Any discussion? What do we want to do here tonight? Do we want to approve this as a 75% design? Do we want to take a look at how we might make some changes or affect some changes that could address some of the comments that we've received tonight?
Can you see my hand up?
I didn't see your hand up, Scott. Go ahead.
I think, you know, two.
Your hand is hidden.
Sorry. I guess two sort of process questions for Paul and Stephen or Jonathan. Yeah, first one, if we don't submit by this deadline, does that mean it never happens? Or does it mean we push it back a year or to the next funding round? And second question, if we were to incorporate any kind of changes that you heard tonight, can we even get a new 75% plan before October 12th?
So the first part of that, Jonathan, I can respond to. Our regional planners at Northern Middlesex Government get approximately $15 million a year to distribute to the nine communities. We are hogging quite a bit of that for the 2024 period, the 10 million of that. And so if we take ourselves off of that program, they have to scramble to try and find out what to do with $10 million, which typically takes five years to do. So likely that will just end up as pavement out on Route 495. So that would be a critical part of the schedule here. Otherwise, they have to scramble. So we can't just push it off a year. We can't take $10 million off of other communities that are trying to get their projects done. If that's correct, Jonathan?
Yeah, that's accurate.
You can perhaps answer the second part of this question.
With respect to design modifications? Yeah, so, I mean, if a decision was made to alter the design before submitting the 75% just based on what I've heard tonight with respect to medians and such, I think, you know, we definitely would not be able to introduce those medians into a 75% design level within that timeframe. So that would certainly put the overall schedule in jeopardy.
It will still be, if we submit the 75%, that's not the end of the project. Unfortunately, for us, there's a lot more work to be done. But we will be getting comments back from Mast DOT, from environmental, from traffic, pet safety, bicycle. All the divisions at Mast DOT are going to look at our 75% plans and offer their opinions and make corrections that they want to make.
How locked into the 75% plan are we?
We're ready to go. We can send it, we could send it tomorrow.
No, that wasn't my question, and I poorly phrased it. Once we submit the 75% plan, how locked into it are we? Can we make subsequent changes to the plan?
I mean, based on the potential median alternative, I think it would certainly be a conversation we'd have to have with the Mast dot project manager. There may be a possibility they would require another design public hearing, depending on how substantial they consider that revision to be. And in my opinion, if a decision like that were being considered, it should be incorporated at the 75% design level, not delayed until potentially the 100% design level.
Okay, Anita, I saw you had your hand up with a question.
I have two questions. One is, so that shared pathway that Bob Jeffries and Juliette Mount had mentioned as being support, would that kind of fall under the same types of design and time constraints as adding or changing and adding a median?
Yeah, I think it would. However, Anita, the shared path was one of the two considerations made by the board back in 2018 when they authorized us to move forward with the 25%. So, I mean, it had been looked at and considered, the three options with the sidewalks on both sides, the one that was finally chosen and the one with the shared path. But if that were to be reversed, then that would be, I would say that's a top-to-bottom redesign. I would anticipate, Jonathan, you'd have to start from the beginning if we were going to do the shared path.
I agree. That's a more significant revision than adding medians at five locations.
Okay, and my other question was actually for Mark Chambers or Police, anyone who would want to answer this. So thank you for still being online. But just any ideas that you might have around the traffic and speed control? If there are any suggestions that you might have to share with the public, we're definitely open to ideas.
Good evening. I think we would like to defer anything to the engineers as far as what's going to be best for the calming of the traffic on that road as far as the design.
John, are you?
Yes, yeah.
I couldn't figure out if you were just fixing your screen or raising your hand.
Yeah, okay. But, you know, I think this project originated back several years ago. We were thinking, when we were trying to combine the water department, construction projects with the highway department. Now it's all under Public Works. But part of this project is a new water line. And my question is around that, is how urgent is a replacement of that water line? We could wind up in a situation here that we replace the water line and we just do the pavement over. We just repave Boston Road as is. They'd have the sidewalk the same, pavement the same. Only thing we'd have is a new water line. And that could be one option if we can't come to an agreement or we can't really come up with a viable option other than that. So another question is about the budget, consideration budget issues. We've got $10 million. I'm not going to, I think sometimes I think that we ought to look at that stretch of road not as a throughput for commuters, but as a part of the town center. And maybe even consider, thinking designated, thickly settled, lower the speed limit, maybe put some traffic monitoring devices in there that tend to slow people down and add that to the process.
Okay, so let me have Steve answer your first question, John, which was about the water main line.
Yeah, so this is something that was identified in the 2018 Water Master Plan Update. It is a high priority project. You know, it has been pushed out a little bit just because it was incorporated into a full road reconstruction project along with stormwater and, you know, road reconstruction. So, you know, that main is pretty much at the end of its life at this point. So, you know, any delay in this project, you know, could result in some impacts to the water main. You know, the road surface should have been resurfaced probably a few years ago, but that was delayed in anticipation of this project. So, you know, there'd be some additional work that would need to be done to sort of restore that back to a suitable surface for the long term. So, you know, if we were to pursue, you know, just a water main replacement, you know, we would definitely be looking at some additional funding for drainage improvements along with roadway improvements as well. So it could grow, you know, pretty significantly, pretty quickly.
Tom, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Andrea. I guess in terms of what we're going to do tonight.
We need to make, we need to figure that out and then decide what we're going to do, I mean.
Yeah, so I know there's a lot of thoughtful planning and careful work done by Stephen, Paul and Jonathan. And I hear a lot of very strong concerns from folks. I feel like if we're either going to potentially, you know, ask Stephen, Paul and Jonathan to go back and do a major reconsideration or conceivably decide that this proposal is what's best for Westford, I guess I feel like more discussion might be needed or at least, you know, I'd like a chance to kind of go through and ask a lot of these questions again of Stephen and Paul and Jonathan. So as much as all of us have a million meetings, I do wonder if we don't, given that we have a real hard time constraint and there's a real significant impact if we miss it, I wonder if we might consider getting together again and going through, having this be the sole agenda item and go through it and sort of hear, especially from Stephen, Paul and Jonathan, again, the careful trade-offs and consideration they've made to get us here.
I have no issue with that because I really, you know, if I had to make a decision tonight, you know, some people, no matter what the decision was, there were going to be people that were going to be disappointed and there was going to be an impact on the town and on our future. And so I agree with you, Tom. I would like to have a further opportunity to discuss this. Anita, John and Scott, is that okay with you?
Yeah, I just observed, I really appreciated Bill's comment that if you think about, you know, our discussion around the restaurant a couple of years ago, that's what is unspoken, I think, rule in town that development of 110 up to 45 is okay. Beyond 45, you want to keep Westford where it is. And you have to, the tension now, if you want to get from Westford North to 110, you've got three ways to do it. Tad Buck, Boston Concord, and Boston's, you know, the easiest. So there's always going to be a problem with traffic, given our demographics and where our stores are. But when I hear a project being opposed by every single person on that road, I think that means we haven't done a good enough job taking in all their considerations. So, yeah, I think we do need to put this off a little bit, at least a little bit. And so what if we do here, we're building for the next, what, 30 years?
Yes.
If it means we lose two years, you know what? That'd be the price we pay to get it right for the next 30.
Okay, Anita?
You know, I would be fine with having another meeting on this topic. But I do want to say that I would like to try and figure out how to push this project forward. I am in support of adding the sidewalk there and the bike lanes are trying to figure out how to make that work. I really want to figure out how to just brainstorm the speed part. I spoke to two residents off of Crown earlier today, just to kind of understand the plan as is. How do you feel about trying to turn left out of Boston Road with the current design? And they were fine with it. Or they were okay with it, at least when I was talking to them earlier today. And it was because it was helping to ease back that blind spot, trying to turn left, you know, around that curb. And they are very much in desire of, like, they very much want a sidewalk, right? Being able to walk to the library, for example. So I would love to, I'd be happy to meet again to talk and figure it out.
All right, so here's what we're going to do, because we need to move along at this point. We will schedule a separate meeting to discuss this only. We will do that offline. As soon as we have a date, we will publicize it and we will notify everybody. And meanwhile, I think several issues for all of us to be considering, including Jonathan, Paul and Steve, are the suggestion of shared bike lanes, the bike lane and the walkway, medians, the installation of permanent speed boards, stop signs that were suggested, straightening out the road, striping. And I think, I think I hit everything. If I didn't, we have, hopefully, all of you are taking good notes. And we can really discuss these and then come to a decision as to whether we're going to move forward with the project or not. So we'll figure out when that meeting is going to be and we'll let everybody know. In terms of a committee that Maureen George has recommended, I think at this point, I think that we will just proceed with a meeting. And the public input that we have been getting, we really don't have enough time to formulate a brand-new meeting. And quite frankly, I think all of the public input and everything we've heard from everybody tonight certainly satisfies the need for us to hear from the community. So with that, I want to move on to, I know you want to update us on the Beaverbrook Bridge project. Hopefully, you guys can do that quickly.
Yeah, sure, we can do that real quick. So the Beaverbrook Project is currently scheduled for advertisement in June of 2022 with construction likely to begin in April of 2023. Engineering Department's been working with Butters and public safety officials, not only in Westford, but also in Groton and Littleton to prepare and plan for the Beaverbrook Road closure and detour, which will be pretty significant and in place for approximately four months. In addition, they're also trying to secure the final temporary and permanent easements needed for this project, which will be done through special legislation. So they've been working with Representative Arcero, Senator Kennedy and Town Council to follow the appropriate legislation that would allow the Select Board to exercise home rule and essentially dedicate two parcels of land currently held by the Conservation Commission basically back to the project for those temporary and permanent easements. So, you know, we're still on schedule, like I said, for construction in April of '23. So, you know, we're still on schedule, like I said, for construction in April of '23, you know, pending the approval of that special legislation.
Okay, any questions from the board? All right, thank you very much. I'm sorry, Scott, I keep missing your.
A quick question for Steve. You mentioned the conservation land, isn't it the case? If we give up that conservation land for the project, it is permanent, we would need to find other conservation lands someplace else, plus some percentage to make up for it?
So all that Paul speaks to that, we're actually looking at a couple of options. That is one of them, but there are other options as well.
Right, we, there is an option where we can compensate as a part of the project budget so that the Conservation Commission is not shortchanged in getting this project done, which they are supportive of already. But.
Or I could go up there and do it. I'm gonna call them tomorrow. Can they do what I want them to do?
Yeah.
That's on me.
Yeah, Eric, I think we need to mute Bruce Bunker.
I thought I was muted already.
I'm sorry you're not, can you please mute?
No, you're not.
I can, yes, I can do it. Hopefully Scott, that answered your question.
All right, Chauncey, I see that you have a question, your hand up, so go ahead. I see, John, I see. Chauncey, do you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead, ask your question.
Okay, I guess you couldn't hear me, but given that Littleton's got the rotary construction approved there, what is the timing? Is the timing gonna conflict with the Beaverbrook Bridge closure?
No, the Roundabout Project that's proposed in Littleton will not impact the work that we're gonna be doing. And we, they're not far enough along in their design for us to, you know, predict the actual coincidence of the projects, but we are coordinating with Littleton and Groton for that matter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, John, see you, yes.
Is any of this land that the Conservation Commission would be contributing wetlands? Or is all of it wetlands?
It's certainly all in the buffer. This is, we're talking about, and we didn't come prepared with a plan, but we're talking about very small segments of land abiding the existing bridge.
Okay, so if it's not wetlands, then you don't have to go over that three for one replication issue. Okay, thank you.
And Town Council and Mass DOT Right-of-Way Bureau is carefully guiding us through this whole process.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. We will be in touch in terms of scheduling a second meeting. So thank you, appreciate your time and appreciate all your efforts. All right. Old and New Business, does anybody have anything for Old and New Business? Okay, seeing none, moving right along. Any board reports or updates? Oh, everybody's shaking their heads, no, so moving right along. Okay, we're at our joint meeting with the FinCom, okay? Where the Select Board and the Finance Committee are taking positions on warrant articles one and eight. And then the Select Board has to take positions on the remaining warrant articles, finalize motions and vote to close and sign the warrant. So since we have FinCom here and they have been patiently waiting, let's do Articles One and Eight first. So Eric, can you get, can you put up Article, can you put up Article One?
Sure.
Beth Morrison said she's here, but she's not a panelist. If we can promote her to panelist.
Thanks, Eric. All right, so Article One, I guess, Jody, do you just want to briefly explain it?
Sure, the $15,000 is I reduced a part timer in the treasure collector last year with COVID. Just concerned we weren't gonna be able to balance the budget and they've really struggled without that person. So I'd like to put that part timer back in their office. The Fire Department Personal Services is for the contract settlement with the contract we brought to you for the IAFF for the next three fiscal years. This is for this fiscal year and the ambulance enterprise is for the same. So to fund that contract.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? And actually I have to now scroll through to make sure. Hang on while I scroll through all you folks. Okay, doesn't look like there are any questions or comments. If you have one and I've missed you, just, you know, shout out at this point. Since it's.
I have a small question.
Yep, go ahead.
So Jody, the Fire Department Personal Services, is that a net new position or it was one of things we reduced in the previous years and bringing it back just like the treasurer collector one?
No, this is, we just came to an agreement for a three-year collective bargaining agreement with our Fire Department and this is to fund year one of that agreement.
Okay, so the next two years, there will be an additional expense in the Fire Department personal budget?
That's right.
And the same thing applies to enterprise, ambulance enterprise?
Yes, because part of that, the enterprise offsets part of the cost for the Fire Department.
Thank you.
Okay. It is usually the process, the Select Board waits for the FinCom to take their position on financial articles. So if the FinCom wants to vote first and then the Select Board will follow.
Yeah, Andrea, can somebody from FinCom want to make a motion to, for Article One?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. I will roll call Christina.
Hi.
Tom, yep.
Hi.
Jake?
Hi.
Jeff? He was here. Okay, so we'll move on to Ingrid.
Hi.
Heather?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
And myself, hi. Jeff, are you back?
Don't hear anything.
Okay, so that's FinCom's recording.
Okay, is there a motion from the Select Board?
So should we recommend?
Yes, correct, okay. Okay, Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, can we go to Article Eight?
This is pretty easy because you voted to fund the recreation deficit with ARPA funds. This will be dismissed.
So no word needed?
Well, you can recommend dismissal.
Well.
That would be a good thing.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Christina?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Jake?
Hi.
Jeff? Ingrid?
Hi.
Heather?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
And myself, hi.
Thank you. Is there a motion to recommend dismissing from the Select Board?
So moved.
In a second? Okay, all those in favor, John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, FinCom, thank you so much for hanging in there with us. We appreciate it, obviously.
Andrea, just can you give me one minute? Is anybody else want to hang around? Because if you don't want, I will adjourn the FinCom. Because last time we did it, somebody wanted to hang around. So, and somebody want to make, yeah, Ingrid?
No, I was waving goodbye. I'd like to go to bed.
Can somebody from FinCom want to make an adjournment motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, going down the members, Christina?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Jake?
Hi.
Ingrid?
Hi.
Heather?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Harry, hi, okay. Good night. Thank you Andrea for accommodating us.
Thanks, Andrea.
Thank you for hanging in there. All right, for us, we need to take positions on the remaining articles. So Article Two, which is to approve fiscal year 2022 capital appropriations. Dan or Jody, does somebody wanna walk us through that?
Eric, can you put up the article, please? So these are the capital requests. I don't know if you wanna be walked through or you just wanna take a look and tell us if you have any questions.
What's the pleasure of the board? Anybody on the board have any questions about these?
Just one question, just to make sure that under the design for the Blanchard School roof, will there be any consideration of solar in that? Because I'm sure that we'll be asked that question.
Anybody, Jody, can you answer that? Eric, can you answer that? Anybody answer that?
I mean, what I would say is they are working with our Clean, let's see, Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. I don't know that a decision has been made yet on that. I don't know if Paul Fox is out there or not, but they are working with that committee.
Christina, just raise your hand.
Yep, I see that, Christina.
So I have asked Paul that question specifically and he has said that yes, they will consider solar on that roof.
Great, thanks Christina.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about any of the capital recommendations? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor, John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Article Three, which is to amend the general bylaws to establish a revolving fund for the electric vehicle charging stations.
So this is really just so we collect money when people plug in their cars to charge them and this gives us a place to put that money?
Right, like all the other revolving funds we have. Any questions?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
I should wrap that question?
Go ahead, Scott.
I thought, as I recall, we have to set a cap on revolving funds or is that not?
Next article.
Okay.
Next article, Article Four, we're getting there. First, we have to set the fund, then we cap it, okay? All right, I think we had a motion in a second for Article Three. All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. All right, Article Four, which is to establish the fiscal year 2022 spending limits for the electric vehicle charging station and recycling revolving funds.
Recycling is just an increase that they requested.
Okay, is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Article Five, to establish a health insurance trust fund and transfer the balance in the health insurance stabilization fund to the health insurance trust fund. We heard all about this at our last meeting. I don't know if anybody else, if anybody still has any questions that they wanna ask Jody? I don't see any. So is there a motion to recommend? Oh, Jody, go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to point out the Finance Committee voted unanimous in favor of this, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, Article Six, to approve funding for an energy savings performance audit. Eric, could you walk us through this? I think, I think for the board and for anybody else who's still with us, it would be helpful just for you to give us a brief overview of exactly what this is and what we're asking the town to approve.
Okay, would you prefer that I run through the presentation in the packet really quick or just speak to it?
Speak to it. Maybe you could speak to it with the presentation at the same time, okay?
So this, again, Article Six, it's we're requesting $75,000 to fund an energy-related audit for the town and school buildings. So in a sense, this is step one of what we hope may turn into a performance contract to address several projects, both within the town and school buildings. Essentially, we would have this first audit take place over the course of the winter, upcoming winter if approved. And the costs associated with the audit itself would only be payable if the town decided to not move forward with the energy service company upon completion of the audit. If the town did decide to move forward with the audit and go forward to a performance contract, then that overall $75,000 would be rolled into the financing associated with the project. So we anticipate that the energy service company selected will come back with a large menu of items for the town to consider, different energy efficiency projects. We just to name a few here, obvious one, LED lighting projects, boiler replacements, things like that. So the overall goal here is to ensure that we are reducing our energy across the town. And as some of the local initiatives that we have that actually coincide great with this is we have our 20% energy reduction commitment to the Green Communities Program. So this will greatly help us towards working towards that goal. And one thing I should just mention, the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee has been actively involved with this project and they are in full support of this initiative.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? Okay, I don't see any. Let me just make sure there aren't any from the audience. I don't see any from the audience or from our participants. All right, is there more motion to recommend?
So moved.
In a second? All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, and then Article Seven, which is to authorize burn place extension improvements or betterments.
So that, I don't know if Paul's still here, but that's exactly what this is and the residents will be paying for this. So everything is good to go and if the town meeting approves it, then this will become a public way. A very, very small street.
All right, is there a motion to recommend?
So moved.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. We did Article Eight, and so we're, and the last one, the last article is Article Nine, which is to restrict motorboats on Keyes Pond. As everybody remembers, this is something that we is, is, was carried over from annual town meeting when it was dismissed at that time, but that we as a board committed to bringing back before special town meeting. So, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to recommend?
So moved, so moved.
In a second? All those in favor, John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Andrea, you do have a few hands up.
Yep, I see that. Okay, Sasha Stolyarov, and I again apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. She has a comment, so.
Hey, Andrea, it's a he, can you hear me?
Oh, it's a he, I'm so sorry.
No problem.
I have a good friend who's Sasha, and I'm sorry I made that.
No, 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 no worries. No, thank you. I know it's late, so I'll just be quick. So I live at 77 Keys Road, right on the lake, moved here about a year ago with my family. Three girls here with me. You know, I've been here a year. I haven't heard any, any noise from the lake, and I've just seen, you know, a few boats out there fishing and so forth, some with motor engines. So I guess from my perspective, it's seems kind of an unnecessary kind of restriction on noise, given that I personally haven't heard any noise, and I'm right on the lake. So I just wanted to make that, make that comment.
Thank you.
Say?
Appreciate it. I'm sorry, what?
I have something to say. Do I raise my hand, Bruce Bunker?
Yes, Bruce, you do need to raise your hand, but since you are already here and you're on mute, it's why don't you go ahead and speak, okay?
Yes, there are three reasons I really wanted to put this on there. One of them is for the health of the ecosystem, the water quality in the plant, which is impacted by the effluent or the, whatever the motor's put in the water, be it oil or carbon dioxide or other things. And people have been out there in years past going very fast in the pond, creating almost a wave action that you would never see, even on the roughest storms, and I've lived here 35 years. And the wave action on the aquatic plants on the corner of the pond, when people go around and around and around, that's, that can't be healthy for the plants. And the third thing is, and I'm not really concerned about this, is the noise, but I want to make sure that water and the pond quality stays the way it is in five, 10, 15, 20 years. We don't know what's going to happen with people moving in there, putting their boats in there. There are more boats on there than there were years ago, but most of them are electric, which is what I have. My friend and I have an electric pontoon boat. And I think putting motorboats on there, because it's so small, is, I just don't think it's necessary. You can't go water skiing on there. You can't get going, and you got to stop.
Well, it has happened.
It has happened. People go around and around and around.
All right, thank you. And I should have mentioned that Bruce was, did bring a citizen's petition. He was the organizer of the citizen petition last spring, and I should have mentioned that. It looks like we have, let me see, Chris Erickson?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Chris.
Hi, everyone. I'm, this is Chris Erickson. I live at 41 Keys Road. And I know it's late, so I'll just, I'll just second what Bruce said. You know, my concern is for the, for the ecosystem in the area. There's been a development, as you know, up on Spalding Hill. The neighbors have been working together to try to limit the impact, you know, of that on the pond. And, you know, we have wildlife, you know, we have common things like ducks, geese, water snakes. But we also have a big blue heron that flies low over the water every day. We have an osprey who shows up late in the afternoon. He comes down and splashes for fish. We have otters. This past spring, we had a family of otters who came out every morning to play and catch fish and have, have their little feast every morning. So, you know, these are the things that we want to protect. And I, as a neighbor, you know, like Bruce, I've seen oil slicks washing up on the beach after the motorboats have been out on the pond, and that can't be good for the people or the ecosystem. So I would encourage you to, to restrict the motorboats on the pond.
Okay, thank you. And Emily, you have your hand up.
It was an old question to ask about town employees getting a different rate for the EV chargers. Sorry.
That's all right. Jody, can you answer that?
Whatever, another time.
We don't intend to give town employees a different rate than anyone else, unless it's a town vehicle. But if it's their own personal, no, they would pay the same rate as everybody else.
Okay, thanks.
Don't take special privileges. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, I don't see any other comments or questions, so. I forget, somebody remind me, did we have a motion to recommend?
I think we already voted.
You've already voted it.
We already vote? I'm sorry, I've lost track here. It's getting lit. And yes, all right. So with that, is there a motion to close and sign the warrant?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm assuming then, Jody, we all need to stop by Town Hall in the next day or two to sign it?
Yes, please.
Okay, we will do that. All right, and for some reason, I have lost viewing of everybody. I can't see anybody right now. I can hear you all, but I can't see any of you.
We're all, we're all still here.
Well, I know that because I can hear you. But I'm not sure. Anyway, I'm just going to plow on, even though I can't see you. We've got minutes for approval for release, regular session of, ah, you're all back now. Regular session of August 31st, 2021, and September 14th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes and release?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Now, we're only approving, we're approving both, but only releasing the regular minutes?
Right, we haven't got to the executive session ones yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
They're on the same page, on the same minutes.
I know, but we're just talking about the regular session one right now.
Okay, I beg your pardon.
No worries. So, all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, now we're there, John. Approve the executive session minutes of August 31st, 2021, but not for release.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Jody, you're up, Town Manager's Report.
Yes, so I took the budget policy direction to the Finance Committee last week, I believe it was, and they helped us amend it a bit. And Eric, if you could pull it up, I just want to make sure the board's in agreement or make further changes.
So cute, Jody, you're so cute.
Who said that?
I don't know, really. No one, no one at my house, at least that I'm aware of.
No one at my house.
No, I had a couple of questions. When we say the 7% to 10% on the town's operating budget, that doesn't include the school budget?
Yes, it does. And I don't know where Eric is. Can you pull up the?
I'm here, it's loading, sorry.
Thank you.
Give me a second.
Yeah, no, that's, that's the town and school, John.
Okay, what is, what's the current percentage that we are experiencing now as far as of the debt, you know, bond payments?
Well, I don't have that right off the top of my head. Do you, Dan? We just, we did just do a presentation on that, but I don't have it right in front of me.
It's not critical right now, but I just like to understand where we are now.
Yep, I'm happy to give you that tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be fine, thanks.
Yep. If you remember, we did a presentation on that, I think at your last meeting, and I'm happy to dust that off.
That means I should have remembered it.
No, that's fine. It just means I don't have it open in front of me, but I'm happy to give you that tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. We need to spend money so we can keep the percentage of our debt to our operating budget. I think we explained that to you at our last meeting, so.
I've been trying to explain that same concept to my wife. Go ahead.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Let me just think. If you go down a little bit, we did add the ARPA funds.
Yep.
That was new. And Town and School Safety Task Force, we still have in there. We did add the partially self-funded health insurance plan. And then if there's any remaining funds, we'll divvy that up. But anyway, the Finance Committee did vote unanimously in favor.
Okay, just before we, we vote, I just want to, we did have an, we did have a comment from Edith Joachimipali, and it's related to, she was hoping to understand the following. Any new proposed, the, the, the provision that says any new proposed ongoing positions, funding for associated benefits included or expenses must be accompanied by corresponding ongoing expense reductions or by new recurring revenue, so that the merits of the trade-offs may be evaluated to determine whether to move forward with the new position or expense. And she writes, "Two very important roles that are receiving support in town are for a sustainability director and a diversity, equity, and inclusion director. Getting to the questions, why are the merits of trade-offs measured as corresponding expense reduction and new recurring revenue in a moment in time? It seems that if, for example, a sustainability director would institute measures that have major climate adaptation and mitigation features, these measures would afford the severe expenses that could be incurred by individuals and the town if there is, for example, a natural disaster. Why is it necessary to constrain proposed ongoing positions to this criteria?" Jody, do you want to?
Sure.
Yeah.
So I think this has been in here just so we don't hire new positions if we don't have associated revenue to pay for those, because otherwise the position would be gone the following year. But as we put the budget together, that's when the Select Board and the Finance Committee, and of course, Town Meeting can decide what are the priorities. So I know the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee is coming to your meeting October 12th, and they are going to propose this position, and it would be up to the Select Board to let me know whether that is a priority that they would like me to try to figure out how to fund. And then I think on the other position she mentioned, there will be discussion with T, or Town and School Safety Task Force, whether they're going to recommend something, and then the Select Board can determine whether they want to allocate ARPA funds towards that for a period of time, or whether they want me to figure out a way to try to carve it out of the existing budget. So those are all conversations for us to have, but that was the reason that this language, and it's been in here for several years now, but that's the reason it's in here.
Thank you. And then Emily did submit a question. How's, how is the town's commitment to clean energy and sustainability reflected in Jody's budget, a possible hire of a sustainability director? Emily, I think Jody just answered that, you know, it'll be, you know, this is just the, the budget policy direction. When we get to setting goals for Jody for fiscal year 2023, we'll be talking about that, if that's a goal or not. And then, again, when we get to the budget, whether there'll be, the budget will reflect hiring a sustainability director. So those are all conversations to come in the future. Okay, so with that, is there, is there a motion to approve the budget, the budget policy direction for fiscal year 2023?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then I have a request to approve the following contracts. Eastern Salt for road salt in the amount of $64.40 per ton for this upcoming winter season, and Western Sampson for Phase One inspections for Depot Dam, Stony Brook Dam, and Navnassett Dam in the amount of $13,750.
John, I saw you have a question.
Well, I have a question, but did we approve the minutes for September the 14th?
We did. We did that as part of, when we, we approved the minutes for both August 31st and September 14th.
Oh, wow, I missed, I was, I don't know why I was doing that. Just one thing, under the appoint the clerk to the Select Board?
Yes, that's you.
Yeah, yes, thank you very much. We refer to Selectman Cunningham and Selectman Clay, and I think we need to just clean it up and have Select Board member in there, SBM, like we do everything else. I just picked up on that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry to interrupt, sorry to interrupt.
No, no worries, okay. Okay, back to our contracts, the two contracts. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita? Tom?
Aye.
Okay. Correspondence. Before we waive reading of correspondence, I just had a question, and then Anita, I saw you had your hand up, okay? With respect to the Healthy Westford Committee request repaving a Polly Road entrance to Navnassett School, is that something that, I know I asked you this earlier, Jody, but I'm going to ask it now. Is that something that mitigation from Newport Materials can cover if that is a project that we decide to go forward with?
I would say it is. I did send that request to Chris Chu and Steve Cronin, but Chris Chu wants to meet with Bill Harmon and make sure that they're in agreement because they have a lot of different thoughts about the school property and so on, so forth. But yes, if we decide to do it, that should be available. And I will tell the board, I am actually with staff, we are compiling a list of all the projects we've done to date on, with the mitigation, and we will be sharing that with you soon. So I got it today. We're just checking all our figures. And can I just add one more thing? John Cunningham, the debt that we have right now, so I don't have to get back to you tomorrow, is 6.8% of our operating budget. So that's why we, you know, should think about doing some more infrastructure need.
I like that number.
Okay, and then the other question I have about correspondence is the, the letter that we got from Emerson Hospital announcing a request for proposed on mental health programming. Have we circulated that to private enterprises here in town or nonprofits in town? One, and secondly, is this a grant that, I wasn't quite clear if we, as a municipality, can take advantage of or not. So, Tom, and then Jody?
Well, probably same, part of it's the same thing Jody was saying. Jody? Part of it's the same thing Jody was saying, Jody is, has offered up Eric to team up with the Town School Safety Task Force, and we're going to meet next week and discuss it and see if we have a recommendation that would fall under that.
And Jody?
I have not circulated this to nonprofits, and I'm happy to, if people have suggestions who I should send it to, I certainly could send it to the churches and others, but please let me know what nonprofits you're talking about.
I mean, I think either nonprofits or also, you know, if there are private organizations offering, you know, mental wellness or well-being here in, you know, in town, I think, as I read the, the announcement from Emerson, those groups would be, would be eligible to apply for the grant, so I, I think we should, you know, publicize it and make it known.
Okay, so if I'm doing that, though, well, okay, I will do that, I don't want them to compete with our needs, but, but if anyone has suggestions, you know, please send them to me, and I'm happy to forward that to them.
And Anita, you have your hand up.
Yeah, mine was also actually related, my comment was related to the Healthy Westford Committee letter that the other night, last week maybe, the Commission on Disability actually co-signed this, I don't think has made its way over to you all yet, but that was something we've supported as well.
Okay. Okay, we've discussed those, so there's only one correspondence left, and I'll just read it because it takes less time, which is, we, we received a letter from Tad McMeadows Condominium Trust versus Montesanti, and a summons and a complaint. And then, by a show of hands, is there a motion to waive reading about going correspondence? All those, first of all, I need a motion.
So moved.
Then I need a second. Now we can all raise our hands. All right. And finally, thank, thank you all, I mean, it's been a long meeting, but, you know, and we still have a lot of things to talk about and get through, but is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? All right, we are adjourned, good night, Westford, and thank you, everybody, appreciate it.